Good morning. Welcome to our regular meeting of the Board of County Commission. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance led by Chief Deputy District Attorney Doug Ritchie.
Could you please stand and join me in a pledge to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda is public comment on matters that are not listed on the agenda, that is matters over which we have jurisdiction. We will start with, well, let me tell you that everyone will have three minutes. The yellow light will beep and the light will come on when there's 30 seconds left and then the red light will beep and come on when time is up. So do we have any public comment? Ms. Lernhart, welcome.
Good morning. Elizabeth Lernhart for the record. I indulge you because I, when I prepared this, it wasn't on the agenda, but I have to be a doctor's appointment later. So if I could talk about SB 426, I would appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. Elizabeth Lernhart for the record. I'm here to alert you to Senate Bill 426, which dramatically alters the governance of Highway 15 Douglas County without adequate local input. Initially introduced as a parking regulation measure for Tahoe Roads, SB 426 was completely rewritten after passing the Senate Committee on Natural Resources just before its Senate's approval on April 22nd last week. The revised bill grants the Tahoe Transportation District an agency focused on transit, not highway management, unprecedented authority over Highway 50. This includes control over design signage, speeds, and shockingly, law enforcement. Section 7E explicitly tasks TTD with traffic calming, a term synonymous with road diets and lane reductions, prioritizing bike lanes and pedestrian trails alongside Highway 50. There's even talk about some loop road revivals. Highway 50 is not just a road, it is an essential evacuation road, as declared by Sheriff Dan Coverly and Commissioner Rice last year. Yet SB 426 allows TTD, an agency unversed in law enforcement or highway safety, to override the expertise of the Nevada Department of Transportation, Nevada Highway Patrol, and our sheriffs. Why is Sheriff Coverly silent on ceding law enforcement to non-deputies? Why no objections to lane reductions that could bottleneck evacuations during wildfires or emergency? Most troubling is the lack of Douglas County's voice in this process. Where was the public outreach? Why weren't residents, businesses, or local leaders consulted before handing Highway 50 to TTD and the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency? This bill risks prioritizing tourism-driven agenda over the safety and needs of the community. This board hastily approved MOU, an MOU in December, which was the framework for this bill by appointing TTD as a lead agency. I urge the Board of Commissioners to demand transparency and local input before SB 426 advances any further. We need a thorough review of its impact on public safety, evacuation routes, and local control. Highway 50 is our lifeline. Let's not surrender it to an agency unprepared for their responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just note that this board has also taken action to recognize the special situation with Highway 50 up there. So we stand solidly behind not narrowing lanes. All right, is there other public comment on matters not listed on our agenda? With that, I will close public comment. I will take a moment and note that we are happy to have Assistant County Manager Wendy Lang with us today. And I guess I will also note that our county manager is away on important family things and we're in good hands. Then approval of agenda.
I move that we approve the agendas presented.
It's been moved by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Then let's move to number five, approval of previous minutes.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the draft minutes of March 20, 2025, regular meeting, and March 24, 2025, and March 25, 2025, special budget meetings of the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Rice. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Moving to recessing as Board of County Commissioners and convening as Douglas County Liquor Board. We are down one on our liquor board with, without Sheriff Coverly, but we certainly have a quorum. Agenda item 7A for possible action, discussion to approve the onsite unrestricted retail liquor license for The Clubhouse Nevada LLC, DBA The Clubhouse, represented by bar manager Kimberly Turner and general partner Mara Penna. Kimberly Turner and Mara Penna have signed a waiver of notice of hearing. The Clubhouse NV LLC, DBA The Clubhouse, is located at 1029 Riverview Drive, Gardner Ville, Nevada. Captain Stork.
Good morning. Captain Stork for Douglas County Sheriff's Office. This applicant has completed the required paperwork and has passed all their background checks. The sheriff's office is not opposed to this application.
Is this the golf course one?
Yes.
So I was there last night. Wonderful. So glad to see you.
Well, then, maybe you should make a motion.
Okay, wait a minute.
I will certainly make a motion to adopt it.
Do, is, are either of the applicants here today by any chance? Please stand up and be recognized? Okay. Okay, thank you. I just, you know, the Clubhouse, or formerly the Country Club Restaurant, was, is kind of a stalwart in our community.
A fixture.
A fixture, yes, okay, good word for it. And we respect the desire for Norbert Nobles to retire. And I'm understanding that you acquired a lot of his recipes, especially his crab sandwich for lunch, okay, which I really enjoy. So anyways, I am so glad to see that you have taken over this and have reopened it. And I passed there the other night and it didn't look like there was a seat available in the house because the parking lot was absolutely overflowing. So I didn't bother to stop because I didn't want to wait. But anyways, thank you so much for keeping this open. And so it's just a little rebranding, but thank you. So anyways, then, that's all my comments.
Commissioner Rice.
I'm just curious, have we made the pecan, the state drink yet? If not, we should.
I need some aspirin too from last night. Most people.
I might as well pipe in. I'm just not surprised that Mark Gardner and a crab sandwich go together.
It's a good day to have a good day.
All right, let's pass this thing.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the onsite unrestricted liquor, retail liquor license for The Clubhouse NV LLC, DBA The Clubhouse, presented by bar manager Kimberly Turner and general partner Mara Penna, as presented.
And I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Gardner and seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously and we wish you very well. We'll come see you also. All right, agenda item 7B for possible action, discussion to approve the unrestricted mobile liquor license for The Dancing Deer LLC, DBA Spirits of the Deer, represented by owner and manager Sarah Roth. Sarah signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Spirits of the Deer is located at 2299 Main Street, Suite Number One, Genoa, Nevada. To you, Captain Stork.
Yeah, this applicant also has completed all the required paperwork and has passed all the background checks. The sheriff's office is not opposed to this application.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, are there any comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Rice.
I move that we approve the unrestricted mobile liquor license for The Dancing Deer LLC, doing business as Spirits of the Deer, represented by, I'm not going there, represented by owner and manager Sarah Roth. Sarah Roth, end of motion.
I will second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Gardner. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Let's ask if Sarah Roth is in the room. Oh, Sarah.
Thank you.
Nice to have you with us and we look forward to visiting you and wish you the very best. Thank you. All right, we will adjourn as the Douglas County Liquor Board. Thank you, Captain Stork. And we will reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners and move to the consent calendar. Does anyone have any thing to pull or is there a motion? Commissioner Rice.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented, items A through M, as in Mary.
It's been moved by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. All right, moving to our administrative agenda. We have three presentations this morning. We will have presentation, agenda item 11.1, for presentation only, ceremonial presentation of proclamation 2025P-042, proclaiming May 2025 as National Small Business Month in Douglas County, and we will ask Commissioner Tarkanian to present this.
So the Douglas County Board of Commissioners have issued this proclamation, proclamation 2025P-042, the month of May as Small Business Month in Douglas County. Whereas Small Business Month is a special celebration month created by the Small Business Administration to celebrate small businesses. SBA is an organization that helps small businesses, business owners, and entrepreneurs pursue the American dream. It is a federal agency that is dedicated to small businesses and provides counseling, capital, and contracting expertise for small businesses. Whereas this special month was created to recognize the hard work of the entrepreneurs and business owners who have poured their hearts into creating a sustainable livelihood. Whereas Douglas County, Nevada celebrates and supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. In fact, the two we just had, thank you. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, the month of May as Small Business Month, and urge the residents of our community, as well as communities across the country, to support small businesses and merchants this month and every month. Does anybody want to come up? How about my two small, new small businesses? You want to come up?
Yep, come on up.
Doing the work, man. Let's do it.
Get in here.
You got right here, yes.
Did you want to say anything?
Kathy Halvedere, on behalf of the Nevada Small Business Development Center, I have Gin here from SCOR, and we appreciate the support that you guys give us, both financially and with resources, to help deliver our counseling services down here. And we've been really fortunate. We had one of your businesses make a pitch at the Rural Roundup and we had another one receive the RISE grant, which was a loan that was forgiven because they met all the criteria. So we just thank you very much for your support. You're in the middle.
We want to be in front of the flowers.
And we'll just.
Scooch.
Scooch this way.
Scooch.
All right, everybody ready? Up here, one, two, three.
Thank you very much. Agenda item 11.2 for presentation only, ceremonial presentation of proclamation 2025P-045, proclaiming the month of May 2025 as Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month in Douglas County. And we will have Commissioner Tobert present that.
Proclamation, Douglas County Board of Commissioners, proclamation number 2025P-045, declaring May 2025 as Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month in Douglas County, Nevada. Whereas wildfire significantly impacts Nevada's environmental, economic, and social well-being and whereas proactive wildfire preparedness efforts save lives, property, and natural resources. And whereas preparing for wildfire includes managing vegetation, using fire-resistant building materials, and fostering community-wide collaboration to reduce risk. And whereas residents can save precious time in evacuation by drafting a family evacuation plan and packing a go-bag ahead of time. And whereas residents and stakeholders need to work together to prepare their homes and communities to survive wildfire and commit to becoming fire-adapted. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners to recognize that May 2025 is Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month in Douglas County, and all residents are encouraged to take action to become battle-born fire-ready.
We want to invite our public safety first responders, fire response, and emergency management folks up that want to come and accept this.
And while they're coming up here, switching hats as a member of the building community, I'd like to recognize all the work and effort that the East Fork Fire and Tahoe Fire District has worked with the builders in the area to try to get to a unified front on this wildfire urban interface.
Chief Ernst, Chief Lindgren, it's nice having you here. And if you want to take a moment, you're welcome to.
I think it was well said.
Okay, all right, very good. Then let's take some pictures.
All right, everyone, look up here, one, two, three. Thank you.
2025P-046, proclaiming the month of May 2025 as National Community Action Month in Douglas County. Brooke Ady, Community Services Director, thank you for being here.
All right. Thank you. Good morning, Brooke Ady, Community Services Director, and I have the honor of reading this proclamation and recognizing some of the staff that we have within our Community Services Department that do some amazing work. Proclamation 2025P-046, declaring May 2025 as National Community Action Month in Douglas County, Nevada. Whereas Douglas County Social Services, the local community action agency, has made essential contributions to individuals and families across this county by inspiring hope, encouraging economic opportunities, and strengthening communities. And whereas community action remains committed to a nation and a community that creates opportunities for all people to thrive, build strong resilient communities, and ensures a more equitable society. And whereas community action is a robust, excuse me, state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways for prosperity in 99% of all American counties. And whereas community action promotes community-wide solutions to change, to challenges throughout the county. And whereas community action strategies and innovative solutions evolve as the needs of individuals, families, and communities change. And whereas community action is experienced in advancing opportunities by coordinating federal, state, and local resources to achieve results for people and communities. And whereas community action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard. And whereas community action is celebrating 61 years of innovation impact and providing proven results for residents throughout Douglas County. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners to recognize that May 2025 is a National Community Action Month in Douglas County. And I'd like to invite the staff from the Social Services Department to please come up. The Social Services Department has really become the hub of our community for resource and referral. We have really hard-working staff that put a lot of energy and resources towards helping people in the community to be able to achieve their goals. They're very hard-working, empathetic, and we're so lucky to have them as part of our community.
Would you introduce?
I will introduce them. Okay, I know all their names, but you're going to put me on the spot. So we have Jody Martinez, and she is our Social Services Manager. We have Lisa Torres, so she's our Administrative Services Manager at Social Service. We have Eric Algard, and he is one of our case managers. We have Vicki St. Clair, she is one of our licensed social workers. And we have Ann Jeanette Fogerson, who is also one of our licensed social workers.
Awesome. It's nice to put some faces to the names that I've heard, so welcome and thank you. You really are the backbone of what we do and we really appreciate your excellent work. All right, agenda item 12.1 for possible action, discussion to adopt the annual budget of the University of Nevada Reno Cooperative Extension in Douglas County. And here, I just got really powerful there, form out. And here a presentation regarding their activities and programs. We have Kena Van der Voort here from the Extension, who, she is the Extension County Coordinator for Douglas County. Welcome. Glad to have you here.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like a quick disclosure that probably doesn't need to be made, but I do have an affiliation with Nevada's Cooperative Extension and I work teaching class with some of the 4H, but I don't believe that has any bearing on my ability to serve in our capacity today.
Thank you.
Does the budget include a stipend to you? Oh, then I guess.
Is it muted? Which one?
Mike.
Which one? That one? Okay, we're good? Okay. Good morning, I'm Holly Gatski, Area Director with Cooperative Extension, and I came along this time because I wanted to make sure you all had an opportunity to meet Kena and that she is here now employed in the community and starting to work on things. And because we're actually going to be presenting today, programming from fiscal year 2024, and Kena will present the budget she's proposing for fiscal '26, we're going to tag-team it for you all today. So I appreciate that because Kena is relatively new to our county and we welcome you. Okay. So just to give you a background real quick, and I have to apologize, I missed leaving the Word Wash Show and not putting Douglas on this slide. I use this slide in all of the counties because what we do in Extension goes across the whole state. And we identify critical community needs and we design education programs and activities that fit those needs in every county. And that's what's important, so I really apologize for not putting the right county name in here, because we are about evaluating that we're making impacts with the funds that we get from every county. And those funds from every county are used for the betterment of the residents of that county. And I just wanted to point out for you all and for the audience that the major areas that we are required to work in, in Extension, is community and economic development, health and nutrition, agriculture, natural resources, youth and personal, personal and family development, and horticulture. So we do cover a wide range of activities and we have staff on that do that within your community and they connect with people across our staff, across the whole state to do work. So this is just a background slide of what we do. The next slides, I can say, are honestly and completely set up for what happened in FY '24 in Douglas County. And just to let you know, the staff continued to work even though we had staff changes with Lindsay moving to statewide 4H person, and we now have Kena on covering so many activities in the counties. But we have 4H going and Tara couldn't come with us, be here today to be in the audience because she is absolutely slammed in the office. She's got her first day of signing up people for day camps during the summer, youth for day camps, I should say. And because it's the first day and it's so popular, it's just inundated with families coming into the office to sign up. But in FY '24, we had 206 youth that were enrolled into our system. We had 22 volunteers, which we greatly appreciate and want to thank any that are here. That is critical for our program to succeed and make a difference in those youth's lives. We have a very active program in that we have a number, I think Douglas actually was by far the most active in the number of youth they sent to the 4H camp. It is nearby, but they work that to make sure they had 35 youth and five teen leaders and two adult volunteers up there at the camp, giving them a great experience for on-the-ground in the camp at Tahoe. And we had many participants go over to the Junior Livestock Show, which shows they're moving up to the next level and participating. And then the expo is a statewide show that we have, and there was 42 youth that went in and presented different items and different activities. Our youth programs are special in that way, that they make a difference. They've been shown to be about 30% more effective than other youth programs nationally because we expect youth to come in and not only have a whole pile of fun with usually hands-on activities, which engage them and get them excited, but we instill in them to create a plan and develop that plan, implement that plan, and then deliver a product. And then they can at times speak about those things that they've done and they interact with adult mentors. And the reality is that combination builds them an essential amount of life skills that make them be higher likely to volunteer, to go into government, to go into post-secondary education, and a multiple other things where they engage and become more active in life and fulfilled in life. So we're thrilled to be able to provide that kind of programming for the county. We also have Jessica, I don't know if she's made it yet. Yes, you made it. Great, thank you. She's running between programs, so that was excellent that she's able to come in. She is here, she does an excellent program in many different activities. Her calendar is super full all year long. And just to give you some examples, they had a seed swap with 161 participants. She's always very active in making sure they get the information they need to grow things well in the community, and that's what that 250 fact sheets are about, giving them real research-backed information of what happens. And just tons of seeds were provided and exchanged at that event. Native plant sale, 1,500 plants were sold, 400 participants, 100 fact sheets provided, three supplemental virtual educational programs provided around plants that were being sold. So not only did they provide plants to community members, but how they can best grow those and make those happen. And Jessica just goes above and beyond to do these different activities. Another thing she works on is the Heritage Park Garden. They have a Q&amp;A session, an hour, they had an hour session where they talked from May to October where people could come in and learn and engage with the expertise that we have with Jessica and her team of master gardeners and other community members. There were 16 classes offered during the 2024. There were 16 classes offered during the 2024 growing season, 122 participants, and once again, fact sheets, so they can walk out with information in their hands and keep doing the good things that they want. And I want to thank Douglas County for being exceptionally great in letting us collaborate and using your facilities and working with your staff. It's just an excellent relationship to help us be able to do what we do in the community with the public. We wouldn't be able to do it without it. So thank you. We have other programs, as you know, and with the proclamation you just did, Living with Fire is part of our team in Extension, and we work definitely strongly with the groups that deal with fire in different communities. And we are just taking off again, but if you want to know what we did in fiscal year '24, we had five different community groups in Douglas County, attended nine different community events where there was a reaching of 412 residents. They provide information about how to get your house safe and in a better place to handle wildfires, educate and provide information of what you can do as a homeowner, as individuals and businesses, to handle these situations a little better. One of the exciting parts of Living with Fire that's developed in the last few years is a curriculum that Spencer developed, which is an agriculture science summer meeting he had in June 20, June 23 to 24, met with Whitel High School about starting a fire science program. Just so you know, those programs have really gone a long ways in that they're actually working with youth in schools across the state to have them educated to become future firefighters in different careers in fire. And that was one of the big needs brought forward to us, that they were having trouble getting young people engaged and getting those positions filled to keep people safe. And that has gotten to the point where they've taken youth right out of high school, and they're actually engaging them into post-secondary training, so that they can go right into becoming career-based people. So we're really excited about that program, where we're going. And they piloted a really cool Living with Fire Art School competition in 2024 in Douglas High, and 40 students had absolutely amazing art that they created, exploring wildfire, how they felt about it, what they felt they could do about it, and each art piece had its own story. But that was done uniquely in Douglas, and it was a really well-done event that happened. Additional programs, there are many different programs that keep going. You know, Jessica has been a big part of a Bee and Garden Conference that started happening every year in the community. That's part of a statewide program, but it continues to happen in Douglas, and I don't believe it could happen as well as it does without Jessica's support in it. But another thing that happens is the Radon Education Program. As you know, there were kits available to test radon levels in homes in the last two months. Again, but in 2024, that happened, and to give you the stats behind that, there was 339 results provided, 90 were greater than four, which is a reading level that says that your home may not be safe. And at that point, you know, there was, reading levels as high as 44 in this community. So the radon program will stay very active and has been active in Douglas, because naturally there is a risk to this community, but there's something that homeowners can do about those risks, and we'll continue with that education to help them do those things. And so there was 37 mitigations in that year. Let's just pause on that for a moment. It used to be that someone could come to your office and pick up a free test kit, you set the doohickey out, and a short period of time later, I don't know how many days, you mail it in, and that's the extent of what you have to invest to figure out if you have radon risk in your home. And radon is extremely dangerous, especially at those kind of numbers. So I just wanted to pause and, for whoever's listening in the room or anywhere else, you should be aware.
Yes.
This is a dangerous thing that is somewhat frequent where we live, and easily tested, and then can be mitigated. Exactly. Thank you so much for pointing that out. I tend to get, so I'm doing these things so often, I kind of forget to tell the story, and we leave it for those months, but it's the story that people should know all the time. We emphasize it in January and February, because that's when our free tech kits are available. But if you want one, they're still available in the office, and we sell them otherwise, other than January and February. But that is definitely something that you really should consider doing. And just because your neighbor's house is fine does not mean your house is fine. It is a complex, you know, whatever's happening in the bedrock below every house and how they're constructed, but it is something you can do about it. And yes, it's the level of, you know, smoking a pack of cigarettes a day, and if you have other conditions, it multiplies up the risk and what kind of damage of becoming, maybe gaining cancer from the radon in your home. And it's something you can do, something about it, so we want to help people stay healthy, most definitely. I actually, just going to quickly run down, and so next year, we plan to bring you these numbers earlier, with the transition of staff and getting everybody lined up in the office, as well as shifting to the new fiscal, just processes that we needed to figure out were a little delayed next year. So I'm just letting you know, when it comes to programming, we'll be back a little earlier, before the end of the year for fiscal year '25. But in '24, you can see that that's, the county numbers are exactly what happened. It was the opening balance, the revenue that came in from the property tax, the expenses were just under $300,000 that we spent, and we have an ending balance there. Just so you know, that ending balance is considered, that we do know that we're in an aging building, and so we're considering a portion of that to address those needs in the future, because that's something we got to keep an eye on, and something we'll continue talking about, how that works in the future. But just to give you an idea of what happens in Douglas County Extension Office as a whole, of the money spent, you can see that we actually had an activity of just over $700,000 in the office. Just under $50,000 was federal funding brought in, $115,000 from state, or just about $116. Sponsored projects basically means we're bringing grants in and different grant activities, and how that's hit the community, gifts and other funding that is brought in. So it's an active office, so there's a lot going on, but just to let you know that you're getting a bang for the buck, or we're aiming as best as we can to continue not just using the tax money that comes in from the county, but bringing other funds in to make more happen. And that gives you a picture of that. If there's any questions, we can do that before we go on to the request to get approval on the budget we're proposing for FY '26. Great, wonderful.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kena, and I am the new coordinator. It's wonderful to be here with you this morning. In front of you, you will see the proposal for the FY '26 budget. The, it has changed a bit. I've been working very closely with Kathy Lewis in making sure that we are transitioning correctly and trying to cover all the bases on both sides, because it's, we're in a little bit of a hodgepodge at the moment. So this is the proposal for next year, the budget categories have changed a bit, in order to make them more in line with UNR's finance software, so that we can track it a little bit better on our side once the transition is complete. I do want to point out that underestimated revenue, the investment earnings and the estimated balance at Douglas County is going to remain with Douglas County. As Holly mentioned, we're in an aging building, so we're considering this the start of a savings account for the building, as well as covering any large budget needs that the Douglas County has, or Douglas County has budgeted, so 532 and 550 down below. That is part of Kathy's budget. Our budget is based strictly on the ad valorem taxes at the moment. As part of that, I have built in a contingency just to be safe. And then you'll see that a large portion of it goes to salary and benefits, and that's because we are hoping to be fully staffed once again very soon. We have one position open at the moment, possibly another coming up. So I'm being proactive and hoping that that's going to happen quickly. Office expenses, that's just running the office, equipment, insurance, telephones also includes internet, building maintenance, we have some things we're hoping to get fixed and repaired, the building, and so a lot of that's going to come from that fund, not from the county savings fund for the building. Put as much as possible aside for programming, and this is to support current programming, but also to bring in new programming, or to expand and generate additional ideas within the current programming that we offer. So we're funneling as much as we can into that while still creating buffers in other areas to make sure that during this transition, because we don't have a slush fund at UNR built up yet, that we're going to be okay. And then professional development, because I believe wholeheartedly that everybody should continue to learn and have that available to them if they would like to expand their knowledge base. So I do believe I have to ask for approval from the board, per NRS.
Yes.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
How much are you asking for, because I can't tell from this?
We are only doing the ad valorem. So the ad valorem is $429,168, according to what I received from Kathy.
So you asked Douglas County to pay the $429?
No. I don't, yeah.
I understand it's a tax as I come in.
It's automatically.
Oh.
Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. Kathy Lewis, for the record, we do have a tax rate on the tax bill that is for UNR Cooperative Extension. What you'll approve on the county side is a pass-through of those funds. We'll collect those property tax funds, and we'll pass them through to UNR. What they are presenting today of what they're going to do with that money that we're passing through to them for that.
Other questions?
Yeah. What is the arrangement with the building? Because it's on county property, but you guys own and manage the building? What is that relationship?
I'm still sorting through papers, but I think it's a lease. Sorry. I'm still learning.
It is a county-owned building that they are in. You probably could say, at least, we don't charge them to use that building, but it is a county-owned building.
So the sidewalks and improvements that need to be done there, who's responsible for that?
The contract we have with UNR is that if it's major maintenance building, that the county would cover that. If it's minor, then UNR would cover that in their budget. And as Kena had talked about, we do have some fund balance in this fund. It is a separate fund in the county that can be used for things that we're concerned about like that. So that would be working with Parks and Rec and Jeff McIntell, what we need, McIntell, what we need to do.
Which I will say, I've already started that process for the sidewalk. Yes. Yes, Carl came out and take a look, and he said he was going to coordinate with Parks and Rec, and we've already started looking at how to get that fixed.
Any other questions? All right. We'll go to public comment. Is there any public comment on this agenda item regarding Cooperative Extension and specifically their budget? Mr. Gibson.
Good morning. Jason Gibson with the House of Gibson, 40-year resident. What I've just heard here is essentially an estimated budget for services and education that come out of our property taxes. And I'll have you note that UNR has one of the most progressive hemp industry educational programs in the country right now. And as you know, Douglas County has waged war against hemp farmers for the last 85 years. And so we will be challenging our elected officials in auditing our tax base to make sure that we're being properly represented when it comes to the interests of the Farm Bill Act, the decriminalization of the nation.
Mr. Gibson, we're talking about the Cooperative Extension Agency budget.
Yeah, that's the budget right here in front of me.
So please limit your remarks to that.
That says that they do education and outreach, essentially providing services and outreach education, right? So let's make the record clear, make the record straight, that we don't see our best interests represented. First Nation peoples were part of your drug war, remember? You've been waging war upon us for 85 years. We want it to stop.
Sir, please direct your comments to Cooperative Extension budget. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and come to the board for discussion or a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Gardner.
I don't have any other comments to, I don't want to preempt. Okay. I will move for the adoption of the annual budget of the University of Nevada Reno, UNR Cooperative Extension in Douglas County, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Rice, that we approve the budget as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you both for coming to present. And Kena, we, or Ms. Van der Voort, we want to support your efforts, so please let us know if there's anything we can do. Yes.
Can you work out of our office here?
Yes. Yes.
Agenda item 12.2, for possible action, discussion to appoint one community-at-large member to the Senior Services and Public Transit Advisory Board by the Board of County Commissioners to serve a term from May 2025 through December 31, 2026. We'll turn to Wendy Lang, Assistant County Manager, for this item.
Thank you very much. Chairwoman Hales, members of the Commission, Wendy Lang, for the record. So there is a vacant position on this advisory board that was created due to a resignation. There was one applicant received. I believe the background might have erroneously stated that two were received. But following a thorough advertising period, one applicant was received, Ms. Anne Carroll, and the decision to consider her for appointment to this position is before you, and we have it to answer any questions. Thank you.
Is Anne Carroll in the room with us?
Yes.
Oh, hi. Would you like to come up and share your thoughts?
Okay.
Thank you for reapplying.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yes.
The, I'd like to say that I would like to return to the board. The, I think what happened before, that when it was time to re-enlist, it kind of just went across my mind, and I'm so used to sitting in that chair, I just was. So I would like to be considered to go back on the board for the seniors and for the transit.
Thank you for your service and being willing to re-up.
Yeah.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Carroll? Commissioner Gardner?
Well, so I've known Ms. Carroll for a number of years, and I previously served on this board as pretty much the only representative of South Douglas County. And so when I became a commissioner and had to give up that seat, I encouraged Ms. Carroll to apply for that. And so I was disappointed, I have to admit. I was disappointed when I saw the applications in December, or January, you know, I guess we got them in December and acted on them in January, or maybe we got them, it doesn't matter. Anyways, I was disappointed to not see your name, and I tried to reach out to you and find out what had happened, and somehow you did miss the deadline. So I am very pleased that we have a vacancy, that we can re-put your input back onto that board. So I am, thank you for sticking in there and coming back forward when we have that opportunity to do that, because otherwise, we have no South County representatives.
No, the opportunity to come back was a plus for me, too. So I thank you all.
And we recognize, I certainly recognize you've had some health problems, but I'm glad to see that, I was hoping you were here today, and that's good to see that you're mobile. Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any? Thank you.
Okay.
Is there any public comment on this action item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Commissioner Gardner?
Madam Chair, I am pleased to
No, the opportunity to come back was a plus for me, too. So I thank you all.
And we recognize, I certainly recognize you've had some health problems, but I'm glad to see that I was hoping you were here today, and that's good to see that you're mobile. Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any? Thank you.
Okay.
Is there any public comment on this action item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Commissioner Gardner.
Madam Chair, I am pleased to move that we appoint Anne Carroll as the one community at-large member to the Senior Services and Public Transportation Advisory Board that is vacant by this board from May 25 to December 31, 2026.
It's been moved by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Agenda item 12.3 for possible action, discussion to make two appointments to the Douglas County Advisory Board to manage wildlife. Each member will serve a term expiring December 31, 2027, in adherence with NRS 501 260. Assistant County Manager Wendy Lang.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, Wendy Lang, for the record. There are two vacancies on the Wildlife Advisory Board, and there are two applicants for your consideration today for appointment to that board. Thank you.
Okay, I'm catching up with the names here.
My apologies, Madam Chair. Danielle Bennett and Tim Glener, I believe, are applicants before you today.
Let's start with Danielle Bennett. Danielle, are you in the room? All right. And the other one, Tim? Let's see. Yes. Welcome. Come to the podium, and we appreciate you. Tim Glener, we appreciate you being willing to serve and welcome any ideas or thoughts you'd like to share with us.
No, I'm just here to answer any questions. I'm just getting over a cold, so I'm losing my voice, so, yeah.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Glener?
Yes, I have a question. And thank you for applying. This is a statewide board, although we have a local board, and then we have a state, you know, your input is also on a statewide level, as I understand it. And I've looked at your resume, and it's very impressive. We do have a huge wild horse following within our community here, but we do have a problem with wild horses in other communities in the state of Nevada. Can you tell me what your thoughts and views are in regards to the wild horse process and program here in Douglas County, for instance?
Well, the horse problem is a Bureau of Land Management problem. We have really nothing to do with it, other than they're in our county. And I don't consider them, I shouldn't say it, but I don't consider them wild horses. They're feral horses. And I love seeing them, but they need to be managed, just like the majority of the wildlife.
And the other question I had for you, and I was planning on asking this of Ms. Bennett also, but so it's not particular to her. The Department of Wildlife came to us requesting $15,000 for hunting and fishing licenses for children of the ages, they're free up to the age of 12, but then there's a cost from 12 to 18 years old. What would you think about the Department of Wildlife changing that parameter and allowing free licenses up to the age of 18, when an individual becomes really an adult?
I think it's an excellent idea to get the youth involved in hunting and fishing programs, because we need to keep them involved however we can.
Thank you. And you previously, as your resume had indicated, that you previously served in San Bernardino County, pretty much in this type of capacity. Is that right? Can you?
Yeah, same thing.
Tell us a little bit about that.
The San Bernardino County Commission, you're appointed by county supervisors, which are commissioners. And the only difference is, we have got funds from the wardens. Every time the wardens write a ticket, we get partial of that funds. So we allot that fund to do different things. We bought the wardens a patrol boat. We paid for tactical vests. We bought them dogs. We did water projects. We did quite a bit with the money when we had it. Sometimes we didn't have any money. Sometimes we had quite a bit, just depending on how the wardens were writing the tickets that year.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Glener, you're overqualified, and we love it. Thank you very much for applying.
I'm also old, but that gets me there, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there any public comment on this action item? All right. Then I would suggest to the board that we have two choices. Well, we have a lot of choices. We could take action on Mr. Glener's, and then we could wait to see if Danielle Bennett would come and talk to us before we take action on hers, or we could... Commissioner Gardner?
I have a recommendation here. As I look at the qualifications to serve on this board, appointments, members, vacancies, the Board of Commissioners, County Commissioners, shall appoint qualified persons on the board who are residents of the county and are hunters, trappers, or anglers, or engaged in ranching or farming in the county. As I look at the two resumes, I find Mr. Glener very, very well qualified. However, the resume of Ms. Bennett, it doesn't really give me the impression she is qualified to serve on this. So I would be prepared today to offer a motion to appoint Mr. Glener, but however, seek additional applications from our community for the second position on that board. That's my take on it. So.
Is that a motion?
If you don't want to weigh in, yes, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Well, my only comment on that is, we don't know that she wasn't raised on a ranch or something like that, so maybe give her the opportunity to come before us? Because that may not have a...
She still has the opportunity to submit another application.
Okay. So not finding that she's not, she's not qualified, just that we don't have the information to verify qualifications? Okay.
Yes, and she's not here for us to inquire.
Okay. I'm good with that. I just didn't want to, like, totally cut her off making assumptions. That's all.
Yeah, we appreciate her willingness, and, yeah.
Okay.
Any other? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carries unanimously. We're at the airport. At the airport. Agenda item 13 for possible action, discussion to, one, adopt Resolution 2025-R-038, setting the rate structure for certain rents, miscellaneous administrative fees, fines, and charges for services by the Minden Tahoe Airport. And two, make a finding that it is in the best interest of the county to lease tea hangers far below fair market value for one year and split the adjustment over a two-year period with a seven cent per square foot increase effective in the first year and the applicable remaining increase effective the beginning of the second year. Heather McEnell, Airport Manager, welcome.
Thank you very much. Heather McEnell, for the record. We're bringing before you this rate increase resolution. In November of 2024, we had a market rate evaluation completed for our county-owned airport property. This evaluation is under our federal grant obligation handbook, saying that we should be getting fair market evaluations for our property, making sure that we're in compliance with Federal Grant Assurance Number 24, which requires airports to maintain a fee structure that promotes financial sustainability without including federal funds in that recalculation. During prior rate resolutions, it doesn't appear to me that there have been a market rate evaluation in the time periods that I looked. This is going to be a large increase to our tenants, and so on February 4 meeting, the Airport Advisory Committee voted to split this cost into two years. So that's why the agenda item says we'll still be renting under the fair market value for the first year, and then the second year would catch it up to the market rate because of the large increase. For some background information for you guys, in 2012, the rent increase went up approximately $11. There was no rent increase in 2013, 14, or 15. In 2016, there was another approximate $11 increase with that resolution. No increase in 2017. In 2018, there was a $15 increase. And then none in 19, 20, and 21, with the last resolution being in 2022 with a $30 increase. This has made it hard for us to become fair market with the low increases that we've had over the several years. So this will bring us up to a fair market rate, which keeps us in compliance with our grant obligations and brings us to the standard with other general aviation airports. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Gardner?
I do have questions. Sorry. Ms. McEnell, thank you for doing this, and I appreciate the Airport Advisory Board taking a look at this issue. And you're illustrating the fact that we are under fair market value. Do we still have a waiting list for occupancy in those hangars?
Yes. Thank you for that question, Commissioner Heather McEnell, for the record. We currently have a waiting list of 105 people, but on your consent agenda today, we passed a waitlist policy, so we're going to be reviewing that waitlist and scrutinizing it and making sure that it is validated with everyone who wants to be on that list. And also, on this fee resolution, you'll see that we're going to start charging a $25 per year administrative fee for them to stay on the list. So those numbers may decline because of that, and I feel like there are some people on the list that just like being on the list. But it still is a fairly large waitlist regardless.
So I guess my question is, and we've actually asked this of all of our departments, community development, community services, public works, to look at their fee schedules on an annual basis so that we don't have to play huge catch-ups in the years, okay? And so I'm concerned that we still are below fair market value, and yet we want to give our tenants a one-year, basically a one-year moratorium, right? Or, you know, and yet we still have people on the waitlist. So I understand that it would probably be a huge increase in one year, but if we don't do this on an annual basis, then we're going to tackle this, big increases, all the time. And so I guess I'm going to ask, you know, if we approve this in this manner, I'm going to ask that you continue to, you do what we've asked our other departments to do, and review your fees on an annual basis so that we stay current with the marketplace and not fall behind, so that then we have the, and especially with 105 on the waitlist, you know, I guess you're going to need to filter out what happens once you put that other fee in place. But, so, anyways, that's just my thought process on that, so.
I will weigh in just a little bit. I really appreciate you doing both of these and doing them in conjunction, that we have a lot of people on the waitlist who aren't serious about really wanting a hangar, and it makes it burdensome for you and unfair to the people who might be on the waitlist and might be willing to pay fair market value. And I do appreciate the phase-in approach, as long as you do actually come back to us in a year and finish the rate increase so we stay at fair market value about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Heather McEnell, for the record, this resolution actually states that next year, the rate increase will automatically go into effect.
Okay. Thanks. So I should have known that, but I didn't read that closely. Any other comments? All right, let's go to public comment. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion. Commissioner Tolbert?
I'm getting there.
Page 412.
I just had to, when you have touchscreens, you know, fat fingers. Madam Chair, I recommend that we adopt Resolution 2025-R-038, setting the rate structure for certain rents, miscellaneous administrative fees, fines, and charges for services by the Minden Tahoe Airport, and make a finding that it is in the best interest of the county to lease tea hangers below fair market value for the first year and split the adjustment over a two-year period for a seven cent per square foot increase effective the first year and the applicable remaining increase effective the beginning of the second year.
It was moved by Commissioner Tolbert and seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian. All in favor?
I have one question before we vote, if you don't mind. Okay? There's supposed to be a pause there to allow us to question the motion.
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay. So does that mean that there will not be any increase in 2025? The increase won't take place until 26? Is that, or there's going to be a partial increase this year and a partial increase next year? Is that?
Correct.
I just want clarification on that. That's all.
This resolution states as of July 1, 2025, they'll have the seven cent per square foot increase, and then July 1 of 2026 would be the remaining cent increase, which is about half, a little less and a little more, depending on the size of the hangar in 2026.
I'm not sure it's in the best interest of the county, but I will support it.
All right. Then let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Just a quick question. You said that the second half is based upon the square footage, it's almost half, so you're saying it's almost seven cents also, but it could vary based on the size.
Thank you for your good work. We will take a, we will, let's see, it is 11:07, so let's reconvene at 11:15 and take a short break. take a short break.[388.62]
Projects. So really, the end part, the unassigned in the general fund is where we spend our focus. And how do we end the year with the unassigned balance? So looking at further, again, this was from January, we have a $23 million ending fund balance in the general fund. When we take out the restricted, non-spendable, committed and assigned, we have 15 million, almost 16 million unassigned. We expected to start this fiscal year with 12 million of that, almost 13 million of that. So when you look at what's unassigned and available that we ended the year better than we thought, it was by little over $3 million. When then wanting to look at it further of why we ended the year with $3 million to the positive. We always want to end the year better than we expect. We adopt, well, we don't. You guys adopt directives to us to budget conservatively. The trick always in budgeting is not to be so conservative that you tie up resources that can be used elsewhere, but not conservative enough that you end the year worse than what you thought. So we ended the year a little over $3 million better than we thought. Looking at that, the majority of it was from services and supplies, underspend from the budget of services and supplies. I will tell you, and our county manager Davidson has said many times, sorry to cut your breath. Last May, we asked department heads and elected officials to slow down their spending. We weren't seeing revenues coming in about what we budgeted. We were concerned that they might be lower than we budgeted. So we asked everybody to watch your spending through the rest of the fiscal year, and everybody listened. We ended up the year better, $2 million less than we had budgeted. The really tight part is revenues were only $275,000 better than we budgeted. That's after we reduced the revenue property tax projection by 461. So it was actually a little bit less than what we had budgeted, pretty close to what we budgeted, a couple hundred thousand. Salaries and wages, $385,000 different than when we budgeted. That is a really close budget. Within 1%, how big we are, that is a really close budget. So I wanted to talk about where this number came from before we talk about how we want to, what the options are to where it can be allocated, I guess, for that. The other piece in this presentation that I wanted to point out is we've had a member of the public in several opening comments, comment that we had a budget augmentation in December that was on consent, and it was close to $50 million, and she felt like it should be discussed. I wanted to quickly address it here. The backup for that augmentation provides all the details of where it went. But the augmentation we did in December was to bring forward most of these balances that we already had committed restricted for whatever reason. So that is the reason why that augment is larger, but also why it was on consent. Because it was already, it's already been talked about. It's already been committed. We're bringing it forward to the new budget year.
Can we go back? Yes. I'm looking at those purchase orders, that line there. Expenditures approved in '24, but not actually spent as of 6/30/24, which is the fiscal year, and includes capital project-related purchase orders of 16 million. So how does, we approved them and we allocated them by this board, right? Even though it's in the budget, it still has to come back for us to approve the expenditure, the writing of the check, so to speak. How does that play into the following year? Yeah, how does that play into the following year?
Great question. I love that our budget, our budget year is July through June. But it's an arbitrary date. June 30th is when we measure everything, right? So we expect not all projects to be finished at June 30th. If this board has approved a contract, but the contract's not finished at June 30th, then we bring it forward to, as a carry-forward resolution that you approved in December, to bring all those purchase orders into the new year. We brought the budget because the budget was in the prior year, and we brought the money, kind of brought it forward into the new year for that. And if you think about it, this $16 million at the end of June, we were under contract for some, for Mueller Parkway. We were under contract for the Justice Center, for pieces of the Justice Center. There's some big things that we were under contract that we didn't expect to finish at June 30th. We decided to bring them forward to the new year. In the resolution that we're asking for approval today in this agenda item, it includes not only the general fund of a little over $3 million, but it includes these other items. And I don't have these other items in detail in the presentation because the backup does outline exactly why we're asking for those allocations in the resolution. But I did want to talk about the general fund. In the general fund, we really looked at our budget in looking for one-time expenditures that can be funded with adjusted opening fund balance with this amount that would help not only maybe budgets in the future, but also, like we talked about yesterday, supplemental requests from the departments and elected officials that can be funded from this amount. I'll go quickly through these. We talked about, from the Clerk Treasurer, the $184,000 for the hardware upgrade. Again, to Commissioner Gardner's point, approving this is approving the budget. But the contract and the idea of the project still needs to be approved by this board. We'll still come forward for discussion of the details of the board. This is approving budget.
I'm catching up. I just want to make sure I understand. So the resolution, the resolution, I guess where I'm disconnected is the resolution was set before we added a couple things yesterday.
Correct. I'll show you where it's at, but if you guys make a different decision based on what we have in the resolution, then we'll bring back a corrected resolution. So do not feel like that resolution, we can correct that resolution for those amounts. Thanks for that. Yes. So we put 184, in the resolution, but again, it can be changed and brought back with corrected, is $184,000 for the Dominion upgrade, $30,000 for Gel Control Board, Gel Control Board that they have in the GEL. And then on February 6th, we made mention when we approved the public administrator to be a county employee that we would seek adjusted opening fund balance for this year to finish out this year's expenditures. The contract for Oracle, the board approved the contract for Oracle. Right now, in our tentative budget, it's a five-year, it's a payment, the contract is over five years. Right now, in our tentative budget, we have the first year of that contract built in. If this is approved, we'll take that first year expenditure out of next year's budget. So we'll help with our ongoing expenditures by putting this one-time expenditure into capital projects for it, for that. And then as the community development team talked about, Acela, we have one year left on Acela that we need to pay that contract amount that increased. I put this in here because it is a one-time expenditure. We won't have Acela going forward. The airport has, in the general fund budget, we have the building maintenance employees. The board approved an increase of two building maintenance employees, an increase for that that would be allocated to the airport. What we found over this past year is the airport really only uses one based on the timing of it. So we have the general fund where we have this extra position. Yesterday, the direction was given to eliminate that one position and change it into an office specialist. So to get through the rest of this fiscal year, we're asking some budget to help with that. And then, of course, budgets are never perfect. So after the fact, we found out that we did make a mistake in our budgeting and wanted to correct it with a $31,000. Another approval by the board in December was to purchase the Denmark property, $100,000 from the general fund for the design of that property. And then the rest of it's coming out of room tax fund for the purchase of the property.
Ms. Lewis, on Denmark, that's the purchase of the property, right?
This is the engineering to know what to do with the property. The purchase was in the room tax fund.
Okay, so, okay, because we're still gonna, to make it a flood control basin, it's still going to be required to dredge it out, is it not? Or is it already in that state? I've seen our community development director back there, Mr. Delaire, shaking and said, yes, we're still going to have to dredge it out in some manner to make it as an acceptable storm detention basin, right? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't the $100,000 here that we were, okay.
The other request that I have is to increase our contingency by $100,000. This, for me, helps when departments do not feel the need to budget extra in case something happens. They budget for what they expect to happen. If something unusual happens, we can come back to the board to use this contingency funding for that. If it's not used, if we don't come back to the board to ask you for it, it'll be available next year as part of that adjusted opening fund balance. And then we really looked at what we had. We feel prudent to keep trying to build up our stabilization fund. These are funds, it's a separate fund allowed by law that we can use in case of emergencies. So like we did the flood event, we use those funds for that, or if our revenues are less than what we have budgeted. We have $1 million to transfer to the County Construction Fund for the Justice Center, the JLEC remodel. We will have bids out soon, but it helps with some contingencies there. And then the bonds, the bond payment itself is built into the budget. But our guidance, our accounting guidance, is that we need to fund a reserve at the beginning. So our bond confidence require a reserve to be set aside for paying bond payments. And so this is setting that reserve aside for that. And then Commissioner Hales, this is where we talked yesterday. There is $96,000 that we don't have allocated that we could allocate towards a housing study. I put just a couple ideas over here, just ideas that we have, but certainly for discussion.
Good. So the framework is we can take action today and we just hold that until we decide what to do with it.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
That is my presentation on adjusted opening fund balance, which is so straightforward.
It's good. It's very good. Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Tolbert.
So are we approving all of these line items that you're presenting right there?
If that's what you choose.
If we approve this action, that's where all that fund is going?
Yes. If you have discussions and there's something on here that you don't want, then we will bring back an adjusted resolution that will fix that to what your guys' action is.
My first comment is that we're spending another $1 million at the Justice Center, and we just had a whole day yesterday about where our shortfall are in our roads. So I just question, you know, we bonded ahead of getting Mueller Parkway done, and now we're going to spend another million over there, and we're still not addressing our roads. So just seeing those kind of allocations just gives me pause.
So, you know, I'll go down that road as well a little bit, no pun intended, of course. You know, we have their Justice Center JLEC remodel projects. And so are we looking at, because when we vacate the judicial and current judicial and law enforcement center, that is going to require a certain amount of investment to move around, make it usable for other entities that we're going to have available for that building. Is that part of this or not?
Yes. Our idea is that, as you know, we got, I think we got the best bonding deal we could at the time of the environment we're in. But it was $49.5 million. We are just finishing up the design and getting ready to go out to bid. We are still pretty far out of knowing what could happen with tariffs and with supply change. And I think there, this would be, Commissioner Tolbert, if it gives you any comfort, this money would be set aside but not spent until we came forward. So it's set aside. It can be changed. It's not set aside by law. It's not set aside. But it's set aside if those tariffs do increase the cost of our project. We have a little bit of unknown until we get that, you know, until we go out to bid in May. But this would provide some buffer there, but not spent if it's not needed.
And so where are we in that remodel project? Are we in design? Are we, or do we have a design? And so where is that in the process?
I don't know if I'm the best one to ask. I believe that there's been a lot of discussions and very preliminary designs. Right now, the focus is on the Justice Center. But we know that once that's undergoing, then we need to turn our attention to the JLEC Center.
Any other questions? Commissioner Rice.
I don't want us to get, excuse me, lose sight of the fact that even though roads are a very important item for us, these are separate buckets, as it were. And you can't take money out of the one bucket to put into another bucket because we're restrained from doing that by Nevada statute.
This is our general fund, right?
These are general fund dollars.
So just to clarify, we could put money from the general fund in roads, but there are some roads money that we could not put in the general fund. Correct. Okay. All right. We'll turn to public comment on this agenda item. So we are talking about a resolution to augment budgets in various funds.
Jason Gibson with Tall Guy Audits with regards to the general fund. For four years, we've informed the board of the unprecedented economic uncertainty that we are facing today. It is nothing more than a Chapter 7 bankruptcy, The United States, Inc. And what this board chose to do four years ago is commit Douglas County constituents, us residents, to the highest capital investment in the history of the county during a time of unprecedented ambiguity and unprecedented economic turmoil. We've asked you time and time again to take notice of our priorities, which is the localization of agriculture, alternative energy, and humanitarian aid. And those requests have fallen on deaf ears. We have a situation here today where the details behind the bankruptcy off the desk of Justice Anavon Wright, or will be on the record for all of you who don't know about the record. You can dial up the Douglas County website to find these archives and these exhibits. You want to pay close attention to what's going on with this, folks, because none of these people are disclosing the detail behind the train wreck that we're coming up on. They haven't released how much those bonds are going to cost us. We know that JLEC Institute's going to run upwards of $200 million, okay? They're not telling you that, and they're not telling you a lot of things about the kind of criminal enterprise that they're running at that institution, which receives the lion's share of all of our revenues in this county and will cost us our quality of life and the creature comforts that we so toiled for over the course of the last 40 years in this county. So it's on the record here again today.
Is there any other public comment on this agenda item? All right, back to the board. Is there further discussion or a motion?
I have no other discussion. If anybody else, if nobody else has a discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion. So I move for the adoption of Resolution 2025 R-036 to augment budgets in the various funds by $5,583,316 as presented.
It's been moved by Commissioner Gardner and seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian. Pausing for questions, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. And it is nice to have a little money to think about what else could we do. So, thank you. But it is, I think, $3 million is commendable amount. Yes. Yes. Agenda item 15.1 for possible action, discussion to approve an interlocal contract for environmental health services between Douglas County and Carson City Health and Human Services for the next three fiscal years, 2025 through '28, at a cost of up to $1,344,000 for the three-year period, and authorize the county manager to execute the agreement. Andrea Polling, Deputy Community Development Director.
Good morning, or afternoon, still good morning, commissioners. Hope you're all doing well today. We are here today to discuss an interlocal contract between Douglas County and Carson City Health and Human Services for environmental inspections. This has been in place since 2012. You can reference Doc. 212796670 as the initial contract that was recorded. It is if our current contract is for three years, and this next contract we are asking for approval for will be for the next three years as well. So the renewal as of June 30th, 2025, that is the end date. So we were looking for approval as of July 1st, 2025, to start the new contract of the three years. And the new end date would be June 30th, 2028. This agreement, just to give you a little background brief, I'll keep this brief, is for the benefit of entering into a collaborative partnerships with adjoining county agencies to improve the quality of life, health, and social services in rural communities, and further recognize the need for environmental health services and programs to reduce the burden of disease and ensure the public health and welfare in the community. All services to be performed shall be those environmental health services and programs as required by the state of Nevada and local law, as described in the scope of work, which is attached in Exhibit A of the contract. It should be noted that Douglas County currently does not have a specific department that does the health inspections, and that is why it is very important that we contract interlocally with Carson City Health and Human Services. And I also want to put a note in there that today, May 1st, the interlocal agreement is scheduled to be heard by the Carson City Board of Supervisors as well. And we're open for any questions you might have. I think Tom has some, no? Okay. Any questions you might have?
Commissioner Tolbert.
Why are you looking at me?
Because your light's on.
Oh, I just didn't turn it off. Okay, since it's May Day and it's a good day to have a good day, I guarantee Carson doesn't have flowers out today while they're...
You know, I was just going to say, I want to recognize Commissioner Tolbert for these lovely flowers celebrating May Day. So, awesome. Thank you. All right, but no questions from you. So anyone else? Commissioner Gardner?
Well, it doesn't particularly pertain to this, so I hope I'm not going to get my hand slapped by our chief deputy district attorney for mentioning this. This is basically for 448 a year, 448K. And we came out, this board came out in disagreement with Senate Bill 324, which is, did get out of the Senate unfortunately with support. And it's not being brought forward by our state legislators, either Senator Robin Titus or Assemblyman Ken Gray. But the fact is, is that that bill has, there's been an amendment to that bill, and it takes the enforcement out of the Attorney General of our state into our health department. And so, once again, this is another, who's going to pay for the enforcement, you know, of that particular bill? Should it make its way through? And so hopefully, we can still rely on the governor's pen to veto that. But I'm concerned that even 448, you know, once again, they're asking the health department to enforce that bill, and that's troubling. So I'm trying to keep it to the agenda item as close as I can, okay? But, so my concerns are that maybe 448 is not going to be enough, okay? I'll wrap it up into that, okay?
So on my part, I think the alternative to this would be creating our own inspection department, which would be a huge undertaking. We require a lot of staff time and hiring, and who knows whether we could hire people with the right proficiencies. And this is an efficient way of us meeting our requirements and making sure our people are safe. All right. With that, we'll, oh, Mr. Delaire, do you have comments?
There wasn't, just a comment. I fully agree with you, Chair Hales. And that's the whole point, is that Carson City does this already for all the businesses in Carson City that need these inspections. I think the enforcement will end up coming as part of that. The Carson Health Department has an NRS that they can apply fees to for permits and things, and that's, and it's stated in the NRS or the NAC. Those are set fees. And so these contracts that we look at here, even though it is just short of half a million dollars, is the monies that they actually operate on as they go and do normal business and get these licenses and permits, and then they reimburse the county if there's an overage. So I just want to make sure that you guys understand that it's not, we don't actually pay this full amount. It's through fees, and they set this contract up so that they can collect fees. We do collect some fees. They do report those. We do audit them. They give us that information and that breakdown in their quarterly billing. And then if there is a revenue, then they write us a check. This month, we just wrote that, it was $19,000 that they're bringing back to us. And then we can put that in the account, and then when next month, or next quarter, is usually when we run short because all of the businesses have paid their annual dues by the third quarter. And then we're, and the general fund then picks up the tab on those because they didn't collect as much money. And so we're usually around 110, I provided on page 530 that spreadsheet, and that was what that was to show you how much we have paid on an annual basis to the Carson City Health Department. So it costs about 110. The last year, it was 110,750. And so that's what's actually a cost to the general fund for the Carson Health Department to do the services that are needed for our hotels, our restaurants, and mobile businesses. Yeah, they do, yeah, they do the inspections and all the food to those, all those events, all of them.
Very good. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? There is no rush of commenters at all. Is there a motion?
I'm going to make my token motion of the day. I'm going to make a motion that we approve an interlocal contract for environmental health services between Douglas County and Carson City as presented and authorize the county manager to sign the interlocal agreement.
That was a really good motion. Thank you for that.
It's so good, I'll second it. I'll put my name right next to it.
All right. It's been moved by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Tolbert. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. I would like to inquire of the board what your pleasure is. We have one potentially somewhat lengthy agenda item, and then some shorter ones, I believe. And I just want to finish my sentence, and then you can, we could push through and see if we can be done by about 1:00. Or we could take a lunch break and reconvene at a time certain. Or we could take some of the smaller agenda items and then leave the VHR one for when we return. Commissioner Gardner, you have an idea?
16, and then come back after lunch for item 15, too, and then proceed. That's my recommendation.
Seems like everyone's fine with that. You know what? Let's push through with item 16 and then break until 1:00. Actually, we might do 16. We might do 16 and 17. We'll see. But let's move to item 16. Mr. Rickert? This is for possible action, discussion to approve a franchise agreement memorializing the county's grant of a franchise to Southwest Gas Corporation through May 1, 2050, to install and maintain gas system facilities within public rights-of-way in exchange... and maintain gas system facilities within public rights of way in exchange for the imposition of a franchise fee of 2% of Southwest Gas Corporation's gross revenue from the sale of gas within the county. Public Works Director Phil Ricker.
Commissioners, thank you. Phil Ricker, Director of Public Works, for the record. We do have a representative from Southwest Gas in the audience, okay? If you have questions and need any clarification on anything regarding this item, what's before you is an extension update to the franchise agreement that is currently in place. This agreement, let's see, as you said, it is, the term for this agreement is 25 years. It is, there is one clarification that I want to make on the agreement, and that is that there is, we would be adding a footnote, and we want this in the motion as well, a clarifying footnote. It doesn't change, it does not change the context of the agreement that's in your board packet, but it is a clarification that acknowledges that this public utility will actually pay this franchise fee of 2% in addition to the utility operator fee of 2.5%, which is currently what they do. This is not a change to that. We just are adding a clarifying footnote to make sure that that's clear in this agreement moving forward. Other than that, this agreement basically would remain the same in terms of what they currently pay in fees, and it extends the length for an additional 25 years. There is also, just for the record, it's in the agreement already, but just so it's clear, that per NRS, Section 709, 110, the utilities are also obligated to pay a franchise fee to the school district, but that gets paid directly to them. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Commissioner Rice.
I don't have a question. I do have a, I'm blanking on it. I own some stock in the Southwest Gas, but I'm a minor stockholder, very minor stockholder, and it will have no decision, it'll have no weight bearing in my decision today.
Seeing no questions, I will ask if there's any public comment on this agenda item. Yes, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. My name is Stacy Woodbury. I'm a manager of public affairs with Southwest Gas for the Northern Nevada Division, based out of Carson City. Happy to be here with you this morning. We have been providing natural gas service to Douglas County since 1964. We have approximately 23,000 customers here in Douglas County. We believe we have had a great working relationship with the county over the last 61 years, and we would appreciate your consideration. I realize it's a lengthy term for a franchise, but I think we have a cooperative working relationship with the county. We're always happy to assist them in their projects, relocating our facilities when necessary to accommodate the county purposes, and so we would really appreciate your consideration of our request for a 25-year franchise. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Then I will close public comment and look to the board for further discussion or a motion. Commissioner Tolbert.
I move that we approve a franchise agreement memorializing the county's grant of a franchise to Southwest Gas Corporation through May 1, 2050, to install and maintain gas system facilities within public rights of way in exchange for the imposition of a franchise fee of 2% of Southwest Gas's corporation's gross revenue from the sales of gas within the county, in addition to the existing 2.5% of their operating fee. Is that the right term?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tolbert and seconded by Commissioner Rice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Let's push through and do 17.1, the Code of Conduct. For possible action discussion to establish a new Douglas County administrative policy and procedure code of conduct. For this, we'll turn to Christine Vito, Human Resources Director, newly minted, fairly newly minted, Human Resources Director, and I'm sure that we can have Wendy Lang, Assistant County Manager, weigh in as well.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. If I may, before Ms. Vito begins her very competent overview of this policy that she is introducing, I do just want to step in. I would be remiss if I did not convey some of Ms. Davidson's, County Manager Davidson's sentiments on this. This is a matter which Ms. Davidson and I actually worked on extensively when she was in my seat and I was in Ms. Vito's seat, and it's been a topic of conversation in this organization for a long time. Ms. Davidson very much considers ethics and integrity a cornerstone of what we do as public servants, if the residents of this community and the citizens here. And so I just want to highlight the purpose of the policy. Hopefully, I'm not stepping on Ms. Vito's toes as she dives into this, but I think it's important to put on the record and highlight that I know our county manager very much values and believes in ensuring that our most valuable assets, who are truly valuable employees who work very hard for this organization, are well-trained and having high-level conversations and expectations around being good stewards who are entrusted with the public's money, and to carry out the duties in the most highly ethical ways, and to set those standards for our organization. So I just wanted to put that on the record on her behalf. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Christine Vito, Human Resources Director, for the record. I would like to start off by saying thank you to Ms. Lang. She did steal some of my thunder today, but that's okay. I am 100% agreement with everything that she said. This code of conduct policy is in alignment with the county values and really does outline expected behaviors and expectations for the workforce. There's also a practical decision-making model at the end of the policy that helps employees navigate day-to-day challenges. And while our employees are already expected to uphold these values, the policy defines what those expectations look like, and it reinforces the standards in a clear and practical way, and we appreciate your consideration and respectfully recommend approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I do have one question, and that is, are elected officials included? I saw the term employees, and we're sort of akin to employees, but I wondered if that should be made more clear.
That's an excellent point, Christine Vito, for the record. We do consider this for all, you're correct, all employees of the county. We don't have elected officials specifically called out, but I would say that's the standard with all of our policies, and elected officials have been upholding other Douglas County policies the same as they would be expected to uphold this one.
So in your opinion, it would cover, be applicable to elected officials?
I would say yes, and there are also, you know, the ethics in Nevada law was significantly factored into the policymaking decisions when this policy was written. Do you have anything to add?
Doug?
Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Doug Ritchie, with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. That's correct. And I will say this, that when the Nevada Commission on Ethics looks at possible violations of Nevada's ethics law, NRS 281A, they will often look to county policy to see if the actions of elected officials are consistent with policy. For instance, use of county resources, things like that. So this, short answer is yes. This policy is applicable to all county employees, which includes anyone who receives a check, which includes elected officials.
I wanted to get that on the record for sure, because I know that we would want to be modeling the behavior we expect of everyone in the organization, and so I wanted to make sure that we are included in this. Thank you. Are there other questions, or Commissioner Gardner?
I don't know. I just have to ask questions, since we don't have really any jurisdiction over the district attorney's office, the sheriff's office, the clerk treasurer's office, the recorder's office, you know. How does that play into this?
Doug Ritchie, again. That is an excellent question. Again, at the end of the day, for instance, I can speak for the district attorney. He has deputies. I'm one of those, and so we're subject to those rules. However, we're also county employees, and we're also subject to, again, NRS 281A. And the Ethics Commission has taken the position that when they interpret and enforce Nevada's ethics law, they look to county policy to see if the actions of the employees are consistent with those policies.
Anything else? All right. Is there public comment on this agenda item?
Jason Gibson, with the America 250 tent pole initiative to educate and liberate the people of Nevada State from the ignorance of our elected officials and our impotent institutions, none of whom elected to show at the Attorney General's footstool outside of the governor's mansion two weeks ago on the 17th, when we had our official kickoff. This is a constitutional crisis that we have in this country. It's a crisis of consciousness, a lack of integrity, a lack of integrity of form. You claim that you don't have jurisdiction over your peace officers and your magistrates of the peace, but you sure are the ones who are funding the new JALIC campus and the institution that'll lock us down into unprecedented debt. You claim that you don't have any authority or any volition or any interest in supporting this country when it is in an absolute crisis, in a perpetual state of emergency, and it's your obligation to uphold the oath and the pledge of yourself and your people and your employees, but you don't do it. You don't live by it. You had that opportunity two weeks ago. Not a single one of you showed. That was during Passover weekend, when the Chapter 7 bankruptcy of the United States is on the international court docket, and we're losing our entire country. Fortunately, Donald Trump didn't have the standing to claim those assets, but we did, the American States Assemblies here, the New American State Assembly, and we're here to tell you, there's nothing about this constitutional republic that makes sense. It's not a democracy, it's a corporatocracy. It's run by fictitious persons. They're unreal. They're programmed by artificial intelligence where time is money. They're organized by means of affection. There's no basis in their logic whatsoever. So again, when we talk about ethics, we're saying it starts here, and yes, this constitution was written on hemp, the same resource that Douglas County is adamantly against cultivating in this valley. And the first flag, the 13 stripes, these are vertical, they're not horizontal. We don't worship a perpetual state of emergency. As above, so below. There's 13 for a reason. There's 13 colonies, and your great seal on the back of every dollar bill, there's five symbols to the power of the 13 28-day harmonic standard. It's the natural law, the jurisdiction of land, air, and water. You might want to know a little something about your country, folks, because you're being taken for, you're being taken. You're being hoodwinked, jacked.
Is there any other public comment on this agenda item? Board, is there further discussion or a motion?
I would like to make a motion. I didn't hear anything in public comment in favor or discord with our proposed code of conduct, so I move to establish a new Douglas County Administrative Policy and Procedure code of conduct as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Gardner, seconded by Commissioner Tolbert, that we approve the code of conduct. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. We will break until 1:00, at which time we'll hear Agenda Item 15.2, and then, 1:15. We'll go to 1:15. We will reconvene our meeting with Agenda Item 15.2 for possible action, general discussion regarding possible changes to Douglas County Code, Chapter 20.622, the Lake Tahoe Vacation Home Rental VHR ordinance, including a proposed draft ordinance which would amend the VHR ordinance by adding a code of conduct for VHR renters, revising restrictions on VHRs in residential communities north of Cave Rock, State Park, and in Lincoln Park, amending insurance requirements, amending regulations regarding wait lists and renewal applications, adding a requirement that VHRs be rented for at least eight nights per year to be eligible for renewal, requiring most VHRs with a nighttime occupancy of seven or more to utilize a local licensed property manager, either eliminating or modifying the responsibilities of the VHR advisory board, and amending certain penalties and procedures for violations. Ernie Straylo, Program Manager.
Okay. Good morning, or afternoon now. Thanks for having us here today to talk about VHRs. We enjoy this. So today, we're going to reference 15.2, which is Page 531 to 531. So today, we were going to reference 15.2, which is Page 531 to 558 in the packet. And I'm going to read just a little bit of the changes, some of the changes, and then I'll go into a little bit of the rationale, and then we'll just keep going until, and then I'll hand it back to the chair. So the proposed amendments to the county code are summarized in part on Page 531. Page 535 outlines a Code of Conduct for renters. And so a Code of Conduct added to the rental applications and posted on advertising forums would create would create expectations of the renter in the community. So this would be something that would be required of all the all the applications and the renters that come up here. On Page 5-
Would you like us to ask questions as we go?
It's up to you.
I think that's good. Just to clarify, I've had some questions on this Code of Conduct. There's not one Code of Conduct. It's that every renter must have a Code of Conduct that includes at least certain things. Is that accurate?
That's generally true, and we outline some examples in the in the in the code. Number two, on Page 537, we clarify that within all designated quote-unquote Glenbrook communities, owners may rent their VHRs to individuals who also own property within any other Glenbrook community. This was not clear in the past amendments to the code, and so we just cleaned it up to make it make sense. Number three, on Page 538, we added an update to the Lincoln Park regulations to remove the three-year automatic revocation on the waitlist. So these provisions were originally added during the VHR meetings and then later in here because there was an assumption that there was going to be, I think the quote was 20 different families wanting to rent a VHR, and we would have a waitlist, and there would be a bunch of a bunch of queue that would be created, and then we would, you know, go through the ping-pong process to prioritize it.
Can I ask you a question on this one?
Absolutely.
The if there's no waitlist and you have three-year automatic revocation, so after three years, they would lose their permit and have to wait to get back on, but there's no waitlist.
Ernie Straylo for the record? That's exactly what we're trying to do is get rid of. We want to get rid of that provision.
Well, I don't-
Because we don't, right now, we have three rentals in that particular-
Well, okay, so but then if there is people that come in and they get on the waitlist, then you need to come back and add it again. What I'm saying is, what do we get by removing it? If they have to, if they, after three years, they are, the permit is revoked, and they got to go on a waitlist, but there's nobody on the waitlist, they get it right away. So they don't lose anything as long as the VHRs, there's no waitlist. What are we getting by it, by removing this? And by removing it, and the waitlist comes later on, then we're, let me, in my opinion, the Lincoln Park people have it the worst. Their neighborhood's the toughest. I think my guy that I respect so much over here said it's a death trap for those people. I think it'd be good to keep it where, you know, we don't let it get too big.
Okay. That's, that's, that's one of the ideas that was put into the code, and you're more than welcome to-
Yeah, and I was, and I discussed it. I didn't think about it until I read it more clearly is, what do you actually get? If there's no waitlist, they don't really lose a permit, they just go right back in the front of the waitlist and they go on and get the permit.
Yeah, I think the way we wrote the code, and we can change this part, too, is that if they, if you pull the permit after three years, they reapply as a new permitty, so it costs $1,000 more for that. You can change that. But in the code right now, it requires them to pay the new price because everybody's, starts all over again. The thinking was, is when we were talking about it before and adding this, suggesting this provision change, was that there's nobody going on the waitlist, we're not getting any calls about Lincoln Park. And so we didn't think, you know, from an administrative standpoint, it didn't seem necessary to have it in there at all because we're not actually doing anything. Now, that could occur, and I have gotten a call in the last couple of days of a person in that neighborhood, if there are people that decide to apply for a permit in that area and we remove this permit provision, they would be, and they, and because their house is too close to another VHR, they could be on the waitlist in perpetuity, absolutely. Which is true for really any neighborhood in the in the basin right now.
But this is the one neighborhood where we correctly said we're going to keep, try to keep the VHRs a little bit more separated. So you weigh the marginal benefits to the marginal cost. The cost is, there could be people on a waitlist that would be there in perpetuity, and the marginal benefit is really nothing except, actually, it's a positive for us because we get more money when they reapply new again.
There you go.
But there's no, there's no really benefit to Douglas County if there's not a waitlist.
Is that in on? On number four, Page 540 standardizes insurance language and liability requirements to match industry standards that are required currently. To better explain that, a lot of the brokers that we're dealing with are writing policies for $1 million on all the properties up there. The provision was supposed to protect the county in the first place. The code currently states half a million dollars. I went back into the permit database of what we have, and about 65% of all the outstanding permits today are million-dollar policies, so on liability. It's up to you if you don't agree with that or not, but that's the standard right now that they're writing them for, so, in the Tahoe area. Number five is on Page 542. Oh, this increases the VHR requirements for annual renewal, so the TOT, so right now, the code requires you, upon renewal, to have rented your property once a year, and so we're proposing to change that to eight times a year because we have evidence, we don't have proof. We have evidence that some some folks that are in certain in certain neighborhoods are pulling a permit and then not renting their properties to take them off the market. And so-
It's eight nights, not eight times, so.
Eight nights.
Eight nights. Is that what I said? Eight nights? Eight times?
Eight nights.
Eight nights. Okay. On Page 544, so we're, this talks about property management requirements for VHRs of occupancies of seven or more. Right now, it's a 10. So if you if you live within an hour of the VHR that you own, you don't need a property manager regardless, so you don't, this provision wouldn't apply. But if you live outside the, an hour in any direction of your VHR, we would reduce the property management requirement from 10 to 7. 100% of our complaints come in for eight and 10s. And the reason I put it at 7 on here is because we've had instances recently on appeals where property managers were not being utilized because they would use a nine occupancy versus a 10 occupancy even, and so they wouldn't, they would circumvent the, try to circumvent the property management requirement. Now, we only have anecdotal evidence of better enforcement related to property management requirements. What we have seen clear improvements on are the application process, the emergency contact, and things like that. However, if they go to the sheriff or call a commissioner, it doesn't, it doesn't work anyways because they're bypassing that process. So, but this does help, the property manager does seem to help a little bit with the property management side and the emergency contact side. So that's up to you guys on that. 544.
I wanted to, just a clarification on our, on our agenda as it's listed here, Mr. Straylo. And I, and I really appreciate you bringing these suggested possible changes to us. But the the agenda item, I haven't looked at the specific wording on it, but require, it says requiring most VHRs with a nighttime occupancy of seven. Is that most word correct? Or would it be requiring all VHRs with a nighttime occupancy of seven or more?
It would be all.
It would be all. Okay, so that's just an incorrect-
Well, just one, Ernie said it before, if you live within an hour, you don't need a property manager. So if you live in the vicinity of your VHR, you're excluded from that requirement. So it's-
That's why you say most.
So that's why the word most is in there.
Okay. I just, I just want a clarification. Thank you.
That's why I bade you here. You helps me. On Page 544, this is just a posting requirement of the, it memorializes where you post the permit. I want it by the door. There's a certain, some people, when you say conspicuous location, they don't know what conspicuous means. We found them in closets. We find them in living rooms. I like them by the front door because when, if the sheriff has to come out there, they, ACT GT will ask for it. He'll want to, he'll ask for the permit. Can I see the permit? And so it has all the parking, has all the, and that's how I get, you know, if there's a violation, I can catch it at that point. Page 548, this is just a clarification of fines and penalties and the procedures used to notice violations. And then probably the one that you'll want to talk about quite a bit is on Page 553. So we added in the code a couple of different options on the VHR board. So we have, so it modifies the responsibilities of or eliminates the VHR board. So the VHR board was created in 2021 to streamline the new Tier 3 approval process and provide order to the criteria selection of high occupancy rentals. In addition, the VHR AB was tasked with hearing appeals and providing guidance on code changes to the Board of County Commissioners. So this work has largely been completed. The thing that we've been spending time more on, if anything, is appeals, is you guys get some of the residuals from that. The Tier 3s, we haven't had any in over 18 months, or Tier 3 applications. So they've dropped to zero, and VHR code changes are typically now being handled by the Board of County Commissioners. If eliminated, future appeals and Tier 3 applications would be rooted, in one example, through the Planning Commission, and the other example, it would, I think on Page 550, it says Planning Commission, but it's actually VHR boards continues. If the VHR board continues in existence, then appeals would go through the VHR board, not the Planning Commission. I think there was an error in there. However, if the VHR board is modified, they'll continue to hear appeals and Tier 3 applications, but they wouldn't be tasked with further code changes. So, and that's a conversation for you guys to have.
Were you done? Sorry. I was gonna ask a question.
Actually, I am done, and I'll hand it back to you, Madam Chair.
Is there in here, I, I may have missed it. Is there a requirement for how often the VHR Advisory Board meets now?
AJ Hames with the record. No, it's not, they're not required, they have bylaws that state when they typically meet, but they, they're not required to meet on any specific timeframe. Historically, they met, I mean, when they were going through codes, they were extremely helpful. They were meeting twice a month for a long time, and the public meetings were full, and, I mean, they they performed a legitimate work. But the meetings have become much less frequent, maybe once every quarter, and typically on those quarterly meetings, it's to resolve maybe one or two appeals.
Thank you. I just was going to note that I do feel like they did the heavy lift, and the the data shows that complaints are way down, that things are functioning better. And I was initially in favor of dissolving them, having completed their mission, but I have received a lot of constituent requests that they may remain aboard, and so I wanted to make sure that if if we decide to go that way, that they're not, that the county is not hampered by a requirement that they meet when they don't have business to undertake. So that may be in their bylaws, which they could change, but it's not in our ordinance. Okay. Commissioner Tarkanian.
Another possibility, which I think this board's just going to jump all over and agree with me. When we first passed this VHR ordinance, the Advisory Board was made up of two VHR owners, two non-V, and three non-VHR owners all in the lake. This board was incorrectly directed, that a federal judge required us to change that, and that we would have one from the valley, taking one from the non-VHR and putting one in the valley, which we now have, that has, is a former VHR owner, so you basically have three VHR owners or former owners, and one who lives in the valley who's not even up at the lake. I think this board should go back to what they originally voted on and have three non-VHR permit holders and two VHR permit holders.
Commissioner Rice.
Let me throw my hat in this ring. I have been an advocate for the VHR committee since its inception. Living at the lake, I have had my phone almost disconnected because of the, the wires were getting too hot from all of the heated comments I was getting from people who were forced to live next door to a out-of-control VHR. Thanks to the VHR Task Force, that is no longer the case. I don't believe that they have outlived their usefulness. I would, I would like to hear from the people on the board as to whether they consider themselves a viable board and that their work is esteemed by this county. I, for one, think that it's premature, maybe in a year or two or three, maybe with the legislation being what it is, that it would no longer be necessary. We would just send Ernie out there and put him in shackles and cart him off and end a problem. But that's not the case, and that's not his job. Saddle him with that responsibility. But before I would be willing to discontinue the VHR Task Force, I would want to hear from the people on the Task Force that they feel that they are needed or they are not needed. Thank you.
Is there anything else that you would like to present before we continue? Okay. Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said earlier, I, you know, and I appreciate this, the suggestions, and, and as I read this, I, I think there's been many good suggestions that have been brought forward. I would suggest that perhaps this board, ourselves, we asked a little over a year ago, about a year and a half ago now, to basically, we, we basically, for lack of a better term, we neutered our Vacation Home Advisory Board. We told them that we really didn't want to hear from them for another year, if you recall, about any proposed changes, because we wanted to see how the changes we made, what the impact was, what the unintended consequences were. So, you know, we, we took some of that role away from them, and, and, and that, that's a concern of mine. And to my knowledge, these suggestions, to my understanding, have not really been vetted by their, their board yet. Is that right?
Ernie Straylo for the record, that's absolutely correct.
Yeah, so I, I, I am a believer in process, and actually, I can remember getting beat up three years ago by Commissioner Tarkanian because he had an idea that he wanted to present, and I, I'm saying that in respect. I'm saying that in respect.
I want to clarify, I didn't beat you up three years ago. I beat you up three years ago and two years ago, and a year and a half, and a year ago.
Okay, okay. But, you know, what happened was, is that he wanted to bring an item before this board for a consideration on changing the code, and I asked him to cool his heels, please, you know, and let the process play out, if you recall, okay? The VHR board needed to take a look at it, and then, and they were in the process of coming up with different suggestions for possible adoption by this board, and then it has to go through the Planning Commission, and then it comes to us with those recommendations. And so I'm concerned that the board itself, I feel like we've somewhat neutered them a little bit, and maybe we need to let these suggestions go back to them, and I'd like to get their way in on them. With that being said, I do, so I'm going to tell you and them, since there's two members here today, right, of that board, the things that I like about these suggestions and perhaps the things I don't, okay? I think it's important, and our- I think it's important and, uh, our intent, I believe our intent when we talked about, uh, the, uh, HOA affiliated, uh, V H Rs in the Glenbrook community. I believe our intent was, is to allow exactly what this language cleans up, right? So I, 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 and I think that's something that we need to act upon fairly quickly because I think that was just some, some typos or some misunderstandings. But then my question then for legal counsel would be, uh, uh, as we, if we start to determine that this should go through the process, is there a way that we could, uh, uh, kind of overlook that? Or, or is it in code that, and it's definitive and, uh, or, or could we just pass that particular section?
I did ask about this already and Ernie provided a letter saying it will be treated the way we intended it to be while this is being fixed.
That was my, okay. So that's, thank you for the clarification. That's important to me. Okay. Um, property managers above seven plus. I think that's, that's great. And I, and I, I don't, I can't tell you how many times, uh, and she's in the audience today. Ms. Romaine, uh, is, always talks about the, the, the tens, the tens, the tens. That's where we have our problem is with the tens, right? Am I, am I saying that right, Ms. Romaine? Yeah, pretty much. Okay. So I like the idea of imposing property managers above seven plus. Okay. And you're right, we had a revocation of a, or an appeal come to us a month ago, right? Where we denied it and it was an individual that was, uh, advertising below, even though he, he, he had the bedrooms to satisfy it, he was advertising below, for the below 10. And so he got, he, he skirted that rule. Okay. Uh, the insurance, I, I like the idea that we're going to standardize the insurance. I think that's a good idea. I never saw, or I never anticipated the process or the possibility that somebody, uh, that was affluent enough in a, in an area would be able to perhaps, uh, take it upon themselves to apply for a permit, get permitted for a permit without ever intending to operate a V H R, just to fill the, the percentages in that community, right? I never anticipated that because I've never been in that affluency, that, that, that ability to just, just put my money out there to prevent somebody from doing that. So I think that's, I think that's really good. Okay. And I appreciate you looking at that. As I understand it, in this code also that you're suggesting is the non-ability to operate in a V H R, a suspended one during the appeal process. Is that, that's in here also, right?
There's no change. It's just clarified. So you've never, once your, when your permit is suspended, it, you cannot operate it. And that, that doesn't change.
Okay. But we've had some people that have tried to skirt that process and, and, and delay their appeals so that, uh, so that we wouldn't hear them and still operate.
And that, that, that's not changed either.
Okay, good. Okay.
Commissioner Gardner, can I ask a question concerning that specific issue while you're still going through this? So I know we talked about this and I can't remember where it ended. But when the permit is suspended, it's suspended from one year from the date of the final appeal. And then after one year, they can come back and reapply. And I can't remember if we said that the statute intended to take this into consideration or we're not going to put in there. But basically I'm asking is can you, the person reinstating it, and that, is that you, Ernie? That would be reinstating it?
So the, what you're talking about is addressed on page 550. And if you have your permit revoked, there is a one-year waiting period from the time the revocation is imposed, which would be after the appeal process. You have one year until you can reapply. And then on page 550, that would then go to the planning commission or the advisory board, depending on how you want to, uh, organize that. And they would ultimately decide whether changes have been made such that a permit should be given back.
So that's my question. Can they, the way it's written now? Or if not, I certainly propose that we put in there that whichever group is, is listening to the reinstatement, take into considerations the prior bad acts of the V H R permit holders. So if they got their permit revoked for some really bad things, it would be harder for that person to get it reinstated within one year compared to somebody else who might've got it revoked for a technicality or, or an inadvertent thing.
Yeah, I think so. Uh, under our prior code, well, our current code, I should say, uh, you're not allowed to take into account why they got revoked previously. They, they're given a clean slate after a year. Under this proposed revision, they would go to that review hearing before the advisory board. And then the code states at the review hearing, the owner must demonstrate how the issues that led to the revocation of the original V H R permit have been resolved. So they would have a burden to show.
Yeah, but that's not the same as saying you take into consideration what those problems were. You're just saying, hey, you resolved them. So this guy that's pissing off the balcony and, uh, the V H R deal, you're going to say, hey, I'm going to now have security cameras or somewhere on the balcony to make sure no one's pissing there. So everything should be fine now. But that's not the same thing to me as somebody who had too many cars parked in the garage, uh, in egregiousness. So would the prior bad acts be able to be applied under this current code? And if not, at least we have an opportunity to add that if we wanted to.
Yeah, I would say you're welcome to revise that language. What's been presented to you is just that they would be looking at how it was resolved. If you want them to also consider the severity of the violations, some language to that effect could be proposed.
I'd like to suggest that that would happen automatically.
Discuss. I just didn't want to make sure it's clear on the record. So if that's.
So I, I, you know, once again, I think what we're doing is we're articulating ideas that hopefully these board members will, will go back and take a look at and, and determine and then bring it back to us. So if they want to change the language, I think that would be appropriate. That's what I'm suggesting.
Whether we have a board or not.
That's, well, I, you know.
Let's say we do. And then the next question is, are they going to look at policy?
Yeah.
And seeing, assuming we'd say that, yes, we are. I think it's important that at least for the two or that are here, know at least what the board's considering. I mean, I, I, that's, that, I think that's.
I think, I, I would agree with you. I think all of that needs to take, uh, come into consideration if we're going to, if we're going to take. Because we don't want to go through the process again of them having a violation again and then being, you know, and then being revoked and coming back to us for appeal a second time for revocation.
My last comment on this, and I apologize. I didn't want to get too much into the weeds here. But if somebody's done some really bad stuff for the V H R, he does not, he or she does not deserve to have their permit back at the same timeframe, somebody who, who was, had an inadvertent violation. There should be a consideration of that.
I think I would concur with that.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, also, so I'm going to, I'm, I'm continuing down my list, but I wanted to let Commissioner Tarkanian weigh in on that one. The code of conduct, I, you know, uh, I, I think there should be a code of conduct. I'm concerned about the ability to enforce a code of conduct. I know that, um, and I talked to several property managers of V H Rs and I understand that they already have a code of conduct in, in, in a lot of cases, which is good. I'm glad to hear that. It says here, uh, and, and it suggested that to a minimum, it would add the consumption of marijuana. Okay. And, uh, and, and so, you know, I mean, we have a no smoking policy in the, I believe in the, uh, Tahoe Vin Center, right? It's an indoor building. I believe we have a, a no smoking policy. Yet when I attended the Billy Strings concert, uh, last September, uh, quite frankly, and I was high, uh, you know, I mean, not in two minutes, and almost, okay. What, what, you know, what I meant by that is, is, okay, so possibly, possibly. I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say anything that will incriminate me in a court of law. Okay. But, uh, the point was, is that that was an indoor facility that has no smoking. And, um, and I can tell you, I was, I was in the Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority booth, which is, which is kind of high up in that, uh, in that facility. Elevated, elevated. Thank you for collecting, you know, uh, pardon to play on words, right? Okay. But even up there, um, uh, there was fumes that you could tell obviously were not cigarette smoke. Okay. And, uh, and if somebody takes a, you know, uh, it, once again, trying to, trying to enforce that, how do you, how do you determine when you look across, uh, the, the, uh, a, a spance of property? How do you know that the individual is smoking a cigarette versus marijuana or marijuana versus cigarette? But I, you know, but I think, I still think a code of conduct is a good thing to have in place. So, um, anyways, so I, I, I don't have any problem with that. I'm not convinced yet, um, that the Vacation Home Advisory Board has run its course. I really, I, you know, um, I, I, I think I would prefer for them to come to us and say, hey, look at, we think we're done. Now you guys have done a great job, a commendable job, uh, and we couldn't, uh, and, and you, Mr. Straylo have done an extremely commendable job and, and your code enforcement officers, you know, um, I just, my gut is telling me it's just a little bit too early for this. And I would, I would prefer almost to hear it from them as to say, uh, we think we need to fold our tent and, and go away. Now, as far as attendance and meeting times, we have a lot of advisory boards that don't meet on a monthly basis because, and they are get canceled because they just don't have business. And, and that's okay. And, and if they don't have business to conduct on a monthly basis, then, then so be it, meet quarterly. And if they don't meet, need to meet quarterly, then, then that's fine also. As far as, uh, a difficulty, I've heard the argument that we're having difficulty getting a quorum. Well, if we're having trouble getting a quorum, as with any of our boards, then perhaps the individual that, that is, uh, habitually, uh, not attending meetings should, um, voluntarily cede their seat on that board. That's, that's what I would suggest. And let's appoint some people that have, uh, do have the time and, and the expertise. But these people are the ones that are on the, the boots on the ground, the ears and eyes of this board that we can't be up there on a, on a, on a daily basis. They're the ones living this situation on a daily basis. And I'm just not ready to, uh, put it in the hands of, of the planning commission or it coming directly to us. Uh, as, as, so, uh, that's where I, as far as Lincoln Park is concerned, um, and the, that, I, I did receive an email yesterday from an Andy Berry, I believe it is, that talked about, um, you know, we just put the Lincoln Park, uh, uh, process into effect January 1st, right? So that's, that's five months ago, January 1st of 2025. And so we, I don't know that that's played out yet, so I'm not ready to make any changes personally to the Lincoln Park, uh, things.
Okay.
So those, that's where I am.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hames or Mr. Straylo? Commissioner Tolbert.
Okay, remember rookie here. Um, but I live in a lot of code. And so some of these, I mean, is this the document that's going to go in? Like the way this is corrected?
AJ Hames for the record, no, no, this is just intended as a draft, a template. It's supposed, it's basically, Ernie and I worked on this together and it's based on input we've received from members of the public, from various commissioners, even from comments made by the advisory board over time. And we were instructed to bring this forward to you so that it could get conversations going, so that you could move forward with some needed changes and potentially some additional beneficial changes. So whatever you decide, we'll take back to the planning commission. We can take it back to the advisory board if you want us to do that as well. And then ultimately what you'll be presented with will not be exactly what you see in front of you. This is really just a draft for discussion purposes.
Okay, good. Cause like, and I might be getting in the weeds here, but definitions are usually not lettered for the exact reason that we just put one up in C's and it bumped everybody else. And typically in code, you can't do that because section one A is one A forever. And then one B, now you just move one B to one C. And so those are, so typically things like that. So that's kind of some of the stuff I was reading through and I'm like, well, this is going to be confusing and hard to track. And then when you delete items, usually you'll delete those items and say deleted, and you move to the next item down for the next future. So when the iterations of the code change. So I'm just in the clerics of the thing. So there's some of those things that, that are going on in this draft. That's why I wanted to make sure that, that I'm, that it'll get in a format that's more equitable. I also picked up on the most, and that was my first question, like, well, who defend, who, who says who is in the most and who isn't. Um, so, you know, reference there to what defines that would be better. You know, say per, you know, section whatever, whatever, which brings me back to my previous comment. Also, uh, in the code of conduct, um, it says the open fire pits. So that, I believe is a, is a definition issue also. That probably comes from the fire, right? But they allow those, uh, the gas fired rings and, and enclosed. So they have some things that they do allow and some things that they don't allow. And so if I came in and it said, I can't use the fire pit, I went out and looked and there's a gas ring to sit around that's fully enclosed, I might think I can't use that. So that's just, like I said, I'm, I'm treading through the weeds here, you know, swatting at flies. But, um, those are kind of some of the things that just jumped out at me. Um, and then the other question I had, which is, again, I'm going to get in trouble like Mr. Gardner's. I'm going to shoot another sideline is that it was mentioned to me that this is a paid board that attends, the V H R advisory board. And so my question is, we have boards that are paid and boards that aren't paid. And who decides that and when and where and how? And how come not all boards are paid? And, and if these boards are, how come others aren't? So just, that was just a question that was brought up to me and so, so that's what, that's, if you have an answer for that, I would love to be able to answer that. Not saying that anybody should or should not get paid.
You know, I, I maybe, you know, and there are three of us that were on that board when we went back and made that decision. Commissioner Rice, Tarkanian and myself. I think the history on that is that our planning commission does get paid $80 a meeting. And then we felt at that time, there was so much going on, so much going on. And we understood that it would take, um, more than perhaps even one meeting a month. And so we felt like we should give them some compensation for that. And so that's what we did.
Plus they're, they're, they're paid for by the fees of the V H R people. Most of the boards don't have that. I had a question that's not part of your proposals, but I think is the most important thing to me. I hope it is to the rest of the board too, is what are we doing to improve our ability to respond quicker when there's complaints and verify whether they're there or not? Is there any options that we have or maybe this is something that could be looked at further and whether it's with the advisory board or whatever? And, um, and, and give us an answer because a lot of the complaints that I received, I'm glad that they don't ever go back to Mr. Commissioner Rice anymore. But I still get some of them that they make complaints and by the time somebody gets out there, they're not there anymore.
Ernie Straylo for the record, um, a lot of the, the complaints at night, um, you know, as we've, that we're aware of. We have the sheriff that dispatches out to the properties at night if there's a call. If people call the sheriff's department directly, they show up. Yeah. To our knowledge, they show up. Sometimes they don't show up as quickly as they, they should. We've had, you know, we talked examples last year where, um, the sheriff canceled the call and showed up two hours later.
I don't want to waste our time, rehash what's already going on. I mean, if, if you feel it's adequate, then just say it's adequate. If it's not, if we're going to do, is there any other things we could do to make it better or more quicker?
Actually, I was leading up to that. Um, so I, for the summer, because, because we've had issues, um, with the sheriff sometimes showing up later than we want them to. We will have a code officer that's going to be working graveyard this summer. Our peak, our peak time for, peak time of the year for most of, most of, all of our complaints is usually from Memorial Weekend to Labor Day Weekend. And folks that live in Tahoe can, can maybe attest to that. So we have somebody that's going to be working until six in the morning up in Tahoe, driving around and making sure that they respond to any kind of complaints that occur. Now, let me, let me, let me finish. So, um, they can't, the, the code officers are not permitted to go on property or knock on doors. They, they'll show up at the property and they'll be able to, um, observe until the sheriff shows up. And if the sheriff doesn't show up, contact the sheriff to show up. You know, and document what they can. That's the best we can do from a control standpoint for a sheriff, you know, if it's a situation where the sheriff needs to be there. And so that's what we're doing. That's, that's the improvement. Yes.
So if that's the case, why don't we have a code enforcement officer that available all the time? And not just at night when you say that's what most of the problems are. Even if it costs more money, the V H R people are making enough money, they can pay. Even if it costs more money, the VHR people are making enough money, they can pay a higher fee for a permit to assure that we have better compliance. From what you're saying is we're going to do it during the summer months when it's the peak time violations. But as we saw, at least as I see from some of the emails that I get, there are many violations. Most of them are at night though, so I would think maybe you need them at night. Well, you're only doing it during the summer. So my question is, if this will help out, and again, it's not perfect because it can't go in the house, and we all understand that, but at least they can go in, they can verify if there's loud noises and stuff, or if somebody's peeing off the balcony. But why don't we have them all the time, is what I'm saying?
Ernie Straylo for the record, all, all the time, all year. We can. We have a, we have two code officers that are, that are approved by resolution for the VHR program. So, you know, we can, we can talk to, we can develop an ordinance to, or a resolution to add more VHR code officers. We can look at other ways to create more surveillance and figure out how to pay for that. And we can, we can bring stuff for you.
Can I, can we just clarify exactly how much of the time is there a code officer at work at the lake?
Forty hours a week up at the lake and 40 hours down at Minden. And it's 10 hours, there are four 10s per week. And so the one, the person that's, the person that sits up at Door La Court, he, during the off-season, he works days, and he doesn't, he does fire inspections for all the VHRs with the fire department. We're pulling him off of that during the summer and having him more graveyard specifically just for this purpose. And the person that does investigations on, you know, illegal renting of VHRs and stuff is going to be going up to Tahoe and doing the inspections during the day.
And does he work weekends?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. And by the way, the, as it stands, the county doesn't, doesn't, doesn't pay it per diem for extra, for overtime hour, you know, outside the, you know, 10%, you know, extra pay or anything for those hours. They get paid the same a day as they do at night in Nevada, so.
Based on what Commissioner Tarkanian is asking, would it possibly be a recommendation of yours to, because once again, there's, these funds, this operation doesn't come out of the general fund. It paid for by the permities. Would it be beneficial for us to expand the number of code enforcement officers we have involved in that? Or is it, is it lack of code enforcement officers, or is it lack of sheriff's deputies that, that, that can have a little bit more impact? That's, I guess that's where I'm trying to find out.
So I, you know, I understand that they're owning so much, you're going to be able to charge for a permit. So maybe you can't do it during the daytime, but maybe if you had them at night, that might help. I would love to see private security guards. We talked about that, and, but the cost is prohibitive, is my understanding, and that wouldn't work, so, because they can go there right away. But maybe you could have some, we can add somebody that's only, I mean, I don't, you have somebody in Minden working 40 hours a day, is that for VHRs? Or is that for code enforcement down here?
So I have Ernie Straylo for the record. So I have a total of four code officers, and two are by resolution assigned specifically to the VHR program. That's all they do is VHRs. The other two do the rest of the county, the TRE stuff.
There's lots of code.
So I, you know, I understand, that's why I was asking, but it caught me that one of the two is down here in Minden, so he's obviously not going to get up to Lake Tahoe on a very quick timing basis. Why wouldn't we have both of them that are working for VHRs where the VHRs are located?
Well, the person that's down here right now during the off-season is doing the investigations. We pay, you know, $50,000 a year for software to do investigations on illegal VHRs, and so that person is doing that here. They can do it anywhere. They can do it in Tahoe. But we can not do that and, and do that. The other, the other thing, we have looked at private security, as you mentioned, they can't get out of the car and go on the property either. They're just going to drive around and look, and they have no access to any of our software. They, we can hire part-time code officers for just the summer. It takes six months or more to train them, as well as to certify them. So they, you know, you get what you hire until you train them. And so by the time you train them, they're fired, right, by the end of summer.
Yeah. So I just want to, I just want to point out that we're having this conversation without the benefit of understanding what the numbers are. And my understanding is the complaints are very, very few, especially when it's not summer, it's not weekend, it's not evening. So I would, I would suggest that this conversation needs to happen with the benefit of, of facts on the number of complaints.
I'm trying so hard to be nice.
That's where you've got me too, as I was exactly thinking. We said we can raise fees, but we're also trying to encourage business and tourism in the area, sort of to play counter. We don't know what that is, so can we ask that you track what the calls are? And that way, that way we have, we can say, look, we have a demand for more people and more times. That keeps track of when they're called and what our response times are, that kind of thing. So you could, we can actually have the data in front of us that says it's justified or it's not justified.
He does have the calls, and he's provided to us in previous meetings. But this is where we're going to get, and again, I'm, I know where I'm at on this board. There's one person that's, that's not completely an advocate for VHRs, okay? One person. I lost my only buddy. So anyways, I, I, you can say that's only, that you can track the calls and see how many there are, but I get, I get people that have emailed me and said they, one, they, they tried to contact his office and the phone wasn't working, I guess it was down for a little bit. I have other guys that say they've contacted them and nothing's been done. And I forget you, the one guy, but every time we say that these people do it, we say, the response I get back is, well, these people are just complainers. Well, I mean, I don't know, if, if we're going to take a position that we just have complainers that we represent as a county commissioner, I'm not going to agree with that. So, you know, you, and many people say they don't call there anymore because they don't, they don't get a response done. And, and some of them call directly to the police, the sheriff's office. So it isn't an accurate number. I mean, I, listen, I don't want to get in fights. I'm, I'm losing any VHR fight from now on, I know that. But, but I, I'm not going to sit here and say, hey, there aren't any more problems there, and I'm still getting complaints from a lot of people.
I, I just want to ask that the first thing you tell those people is you've got to use the system. Because it's only through the system that we track, we have data, we have information, and only with good information can we truly run a great, a great program. If there's more complaints than Ernie is aware of, then our system's failing because we don't get the accurate numbers. So the first thing you need to do when you get something is say, you've got to use the system. You've got to use the system.
That's good, and we did. The, the one lady who was here, the doctor, she used the system, and we said every time she complained before those two that came up, that they were unverified. And she had videos of them, so we know they weren't unverified. Well, we got one person, yeah, and that was wonderful.
All right. If, are there more questions?
Just saying, data drives decisions, so you're right. It's, you've got to have, yeah, so we're, we're there. I think if we can continue to track and respond as best we can. And another thing is you can't enforce 100%, even the sheriff's department can't enforce 100%. You can't, you know, prohibit everything. So if, as long as we're continuing to improve, until we get to a point that it's unimprovable, I feel like that's when we need to make that.
Well, the numbers are pretty good right now. Commissioner Rice?
Okay. I would like to hear from the people that actually are on the board. I'm sure that they have read this document forwards and backwards and have opinions about what should stay, what shouldn't stay. I would like to hear from the people that are actually on the ground doing the, the footwork.
Let's have public comment. Yeah. Wait, before you do that, let me just ask, it's just the two of you who are here from the committee.
I mean, from our board?
From your board. Okay. If you'll just wait, is there any public comment besides those two?
All right. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Hales and Commissioners. My name is Chad Gurken, and I'm here today as a resident of Lincoln Park. I'd like to provide the board with an update regarding the VHR program as it pertains to the residents within our neighborhood. Since the density, parking, and other changes have been implemented, we have experienced a net positive result. We have added full-time residents to the neighborhood, we have reduced the noise impact, not completely, but the vehicle impact and added, added to the overall safety of the neighborhood. I believe we have stuck, struck a balance between the financial interests of owners and the overall safety and quiet enjoyment of the homeowners. The impacts of the changes implemented have been a positive for Lincoln Park. Thank you. I do not see any reason to change the existing code as it pertains to our neighborhood. Under the current code, homeowners impacted by the density regulation, including those who did not win the initial lottery, have the chance to rent three years in the future. Under the proposed code changes, this would go away. It would be those who won the lottery that get to hold their permits into perpetuity. I suggest that code continue to allow for a waitlist and turnover permits under the current system. If there are no properties on the waitlist that would interfere with the current permit, then the permit should renew, business as usual. I believe this is consistent with the intent of the board, and the system is widely accepted by the residents of Lincoln Park. I ask that the underlying workings and waitlist system continue as initially intended, allowing property owners an equal chance to participate in the program. I would also like to say that not everyone in Lincoln Park was aware of these changes, but additional property, property owners asked that I recognize that they were not in support of the changes. This includes the Nelson family, the Tucker and Miller families, the Hollingsworths, the Win family, the Reed family, and we're the Gurken family. I appreciate all of your continued efforts to improving the VHR program. Thank you.
Mr. Gurken, thank you so much for the good news and the, the success. We appreciate that. Yes, improvement, I should say, the improvement. Yes, all right.
Good to hear that we're doing something right, finally.
Yep. Are there, is there any other public comment besides our VHR board members? Okay, then we will invite the VHR board members. You know, before you, before you, I just want to state, just so that you don't spend a long time, it feels to me like the will of the board is not going to be to abolish the VHR advisory board, and it feels to me like the will of the board is going to be to let you look at the, whatever we, you know, the proposed changes. And so you probably don't need to spend a long time convincing us of that. Okay, come on up. It's Mer, Romaine, thank you for your service, and it's, it's good to see you here.
You look like you've got a great tan. Have you been on vacation for a while?
I can't speak for the board, I'm only speaking for myself, one of five wonderful people. As soon as I, I would feel like we're not needed anymore, I'd be more than happy to let you know. My husband is now also retired, wants to travel, and I'm going to be a grandma. So I'm more than happy to go do other things. Thank you, I'm excited about it. So we took notes, I took notes about everything here. The board also had a parking lot of some small tweaks and stuff that I think would improve. We've always wanted to go do that. I think what we need is some consistency on the dates and times that we're meeting so that people can know when we're doing that. And I, I truly do believe that we still have some work to do. I call us the, in my mind, we're the baffles in an old waterbed, and we're the ones that just kind of, instead of the pendulum swinging this hugely with referendums to get rid of, and with people saying we shouldn't have anything at all, I think we're the baffles that kind of hopefully understand the process very well, much better than, you know, because we're picked to do this job, that we understand it, and that we're more than willing to do the work and talk through all of these types of things so that what comes to you has been fully vetted and thought through. So I'm more than happy to still do it.
Can I ask you one question?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Tarkanian has brought this up, and I, and I wonder about it too. Do you feel like the makeup of the board in regards to two and two and one is appropriate, or do you have an opinion on that?
I do believe that they should be representatives from the place that has VHRs only. I think that is really important because that's how we understand the systems and what's happening and what's happening with residents and, and how hard it is to do certain things as a VHR owner. So I would love to see, and I, you know, the, I would love to see the, the valley part of that become a lake resident. And I think it should be three non-VHR owners and two VHR owners as a VHR owner, I'm saying that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that observation. I appreciate that, yeah.
Okay, Miki Hempler, Lake Lauren, I'm speaking for myself as just one, I can't really speak for myself because you know I'm on that board. So as a board member, I agree with you, Chair Hales, that we have done the heavy lifting. We had a list of talking points that we were going to look at when we were asked to by the board. We were going to wait that year and see what happens. I just had a couple of answers to a few things. Commissioner Tolbert, you brought up that part of the job is to encourage tourism. I disagree with that, and that the job of encouraging tourism is the Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority, they get all the funding for that, not this particular, not board, but program. Lincoln Park, absolutely think it should stay as is. It was one of my personal great achievements was to get Lincoln Park squared away so that those folks had a voice, and I'm really proud of that work, and I think that we should leave it as is for now. And as far as eliminating the board, I will say, which I've said to everybody, we work at the pleasure of the board. If you no longer feel you need us for recommendations, then we should absolutely be dissolved. I do not believe that if we're going to be not doing recommendations, I, I believe we should be dissolved because appeals can be done by anyone that can read. It's just a matter of knowing what the ordinance says. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you for that and for your many years of excellent service and leadership. Thank you.
And not everyone thinks they're, I'm just saying.
All right. So I would like to.
I just wanted to say, thank you for pointing that out. Wasn't my intent to say that your board is for the, I was thinking us, and we need to keep tourism going. So appreciate you fixing that for me. Thank you.
So at this point, how about I sum up where I think we're at, and if anyone feels differently, then we can go from there. But it looks to me like the will of the board is to have Mr. Straylo and Mr. Hames take these suggestions to the advisory board. And the will of the board would be to keep Lincoln Park provisions as they are, and the will of the board would be to request that they look at the composition of the advisory board members. And most of the other things that were suggested are, were positively received by this board. And then it will come back to us after it goes through the ranks of advisory board, planning commission, and then back to us. Commissioner Tolbert?
In the, the, the VHR board and their recommendations, are they only providing recommendations when asked? Or does the VHR board have the power to recognize that something needs to be done and ask that it be presented up the stream?
They've been able to sous sponti do stuff. But I believe, I think, I think that it would be, I think it would be recognized that there's much less to do, that only refinements to this ordinance need to be made. This ordinance really is, it's being imitated by jurisdictions. The complaint data is that it's gone way, way down. Mr. Gurken seems to be kind of, you know, cautiously, kind of what we get, the sense of things, that, that there's a lot of success that's been made. And it's not perfect, but nobody wants to make major revisions, except for maybe Mr. Tarkanian to the VHR ordinance.
Right. I just wanted to confirm that the board does actually have the power to operate as they see they need.
They do, but what has happened in the past is if, that, they do a lot of hard work, they bring stuff to us, and we say, we're going to do our own hard work on that. And then it's demoralizing to the board, and, and it's counterproductive and inefficient, and I don't want that to keep happening. Well, not keep, it hasn't happened for quite some time, but I don't want that to happen again. So.
He voted for almost all the board's recommendations, so please don't single me out on that one. out on that one.
Oh, I mean, you know, you would, you would make the major revision of just...
That, that's...
Okay, sorry, I'm misrepresenting you. Anyway.
I like them near the tourist areas.
There you go. Thank you for fixing that. Yes, Mr. Hames, Mr. Straylo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. AJ Hames for the record. Just to clarify, the advisory board will consider this draft, or maybe a version of this, without some of the more objectionable pieces. But they are not, at this time, to go beyond that. They did, for example, bring up, the, the two that are here, that they previously had a, a parking lot of ideas that they wanted to get back to. Are you authorizing them to also explore those ideas?
That's a really good question.
And then if you are, is there a timeline for when you want these ideas presented? Do you want this to come back more quickly, and then the parking lot to come back later? Or do you want it all to come forward together?
I'll take a stab, and if you don't like what I say, then, I want it all to come back together. I'm not interested in major revisions. It's working really well, and the revisions we've already discussed, good enough, unless they feel super strongly about something that they also want to add. That's my feeling. Does anyone else have anything different?
I really think that we have done, we, this group has done such a marvelous job. People are coming to us to use us as a model to how to take care of their problems in their jurisdictions. And I think that the work that Ernie has done, and the work that the task force has done, is commendable. They have gone above and beyond, and I have complete faith that they will be able to take a look at the list of suggested changes and come up with something that's even more workable than what we have now. And I want to thank you for what you are about to do.
Okay.
And I want to apologize. I look like I'm sitting in a well. Somebody pushed the button on my chair, and I'm now sitting with my feet chewing on my elbows, but I don't know how to get the darn thing back up where it is. Anyway, it's nothing personal.
Commissioner Gardner.
And all I wanted to say is ditto and ditto, okay? I, and ditto, okay? So, yeah. I, once, yeah, it's a model, and when, the best compliment is imitation, right? They say imitation is the, is the best, so, huh? El Dorado County has taken a look at it, and I know Placer is, right? Placer County?
That's the one that they just reported.
They threw out the one provision about...
That was south of Tahoe, not, not the county. That was the city.
But, yes, and I know Placer, right? So, yeah.
Does that give you what you need?
Just a couple more clarifications, if I may. The, is there any timeline? Do you want to have this come back to you on any specific timeline?
No.
Okay. And, just to be clear, one last time, in, in the past, I think this board has generally either said to the advisory board, "Have at it," or "Consider certain topics only," like, "Consider density," or "Consider Lincoln Park." It sounds like what you're asking the board to do is kind of a limited-scale review. It's, it's this, these suggestions, plus anything that they may have had on their parking lot of ideas.
Personally, I would say only the parking lot if they're compelling. It's working. We don't want to do a major overhaul. We, that's, is everyone okay with that? Yes.
Again, yeah, that's what I was getting to with the, you know, if they have things that they need to, should happen, are they allowed to bring it forward? So, yeah, just because you have a bunch of stuff that we'd like to do, doesn't mean that they're super important, they have to bring it forward.
Yes. And Mr. Straylo, did you have questions?
We have to trust them.
Or did that handle it?
Ernie Straylo, for the record. No, I, actually AJ was asking the questions for me.
Okay, all right, then we're gonna, no.
And I just, I want to be very clear on this, on this Glenbrook thing, okay?
No.
On the Glenbrook thing.
They got it. It's clear. They got it.
Okay, okay.
We're moving on.
Okay.
Agenda item, thank you, both of you. Seventeen point one, discussion to establish a new, nope, we already did that one. Seventeen point two, discussion and direction to staff regarding legislative or legislative issues proposed by legislators or other entities permitted to submit bill draft requests that may impact Douglas County. The board may take action to support or oppose any legislative item included in the Douglas County Bill Tracker report included with the board packet. Discussion may include taking action to support, oppose, or remain neutral on SB 69, which revises provisions relating to economic development, and SB 426, which establishes provisions relating to the Lake Tahoe Basin Scenic Byway Corridor Recreation Safety Zone. Assistant County Manager Wendy Lang.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for that long title, to give me time to get down here. Wendy Lang, Assistant County Manager, for the record, here in place of Ms. Davidson today. As the chairwoman read into the record, this is a standing item before all of you to discuss legislation while the Nevada Legislature is in session this year. There are a list of bills attached in general updates on various bills that we have been tracking, and there are two bills that were specifically called out in the title in this action for consideration and discussion by this board. I'm happy to speak to you about each of those, or any other questions that you may have. And I do have someone in the audience from Tahoe Transportation District that may provide some insight and clarity on the bill relevant to the Tahoe area traffic safety. So, happy to address however you see fit, Madam Chair.
Why don't we start with the SB 426 and invite our TTD person to, how do you want to handle it?
That, that sounds great. So, I'm sorry, Ms. Steyer, Tara Steyer with Tahoe Transportation District, if she would come and join me, can provide us some oversight. Thank you. There you go. Thank you. Good afternoon, Tara Steyer, Capital Program Manager with Tahoe Transportation District. So I'm here today representing the district regarding Senate Bill 426, and I'd like to start by acknowledging the public comments that we heard earlier today. The, we used existing legislation for Red Rock Canyon Scenic Byway to form and draft the language for SB 426. The bill was written to support the projects in parking within the State Route 28 corridor, and the central objective within the SR 28 corridor is to relocate that unsafe shoulder parked, those unsafe shoulder parked vehicles to designated off-highway locations. So, the East Shore Trail and the Ponderosa Lot opened back in 2019, and along with that was a no-parking zone from the trailhead to Sand Harbor. That no-parking zone has been about 98% effective. There's just a couple of areas where vehicles continue to squeeze in despite the signage, and of course, requiring enforcement there. So, as we relocate more vehicles to off-highway lots, those no-parking zones will be expanded along the corridor. We know that law enforcement staffing is limited, and we believe that it's necessary to have legislation to provide an inter-agency solution to parking management. Our team has reached out to Sheriff Coverly, and he supports the bill as written. One call-out in the language I'd like to address is related to, it's Section 1, Item 2A, and it specifically says, "The Department of Transportation and local law enforcement agency may implement measures of traffic calming." So, traffic calming, then, would be the responsibility, of course, of the DOT and law enforcement. TTD will not be pursuing any traffic calming or road diets on Highway 50. We lead off-highway parking projects, multimodal projects, transit. The only exception would be crosswalks, and those crosswalks would be between parking lots, trails, you know, offering those connections. So, in closing, the bill creates a framework for the local, state, and federal agencies to come together to address parking management, reduce those shoulder parked vehicles, pedestrians in the travel lanes, and we feel that we do need a consistent collaborative approach for parking management. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I just...
Yes.
So, would you have a problem going to the bill drafters and inserting a provision, eliminating the ability to change the number of lanes on Highway 50? It seems like if you made it clearer, you would lose all opposition and make our lives easier, and then future people that are running this organization, if you're not around, won't be, have the ability to interpret it a different way.
I think that's absolutely a possibility. I know that the team that's been working on this would like to keep the bill language as is, because it will sort of start the process over, and I believe that we're pretty much at...
I'm new at this. I'm sorry, I'm new at this, but you just said something. You're telling me if they change any language in the bill, they have to start the process all over again?
Um, I, if I understand correct...
I thought people, the legislators may change this all the time until the final vote.
I believe it has to go back to the committee.
Wow, okay.
Are there other questions?
Yes, so the, the comment is that, that opens the door for future, that, that this could be allowed by the board. So that's, I think that's the problem that everybody has, even though you say you're not going to do it, and you're 100% that you're not, and we believe you, but that doesn't mean that when the board changes, that the, that the will of the board doesn't change. So that's kind of the question of, you know, tightening up those nuts and bolts. So, I would have a hard time supporting it, knowing that, you know, the door is open. I mean, I, whereas residential designer, and there's so many times we've done garages that ended up living spaces, and, you know, nobody's got to know about it, you know? So, that doesn't, you know, I don't have a lot of faith in the future, so.
Understood. As I understand the way it's written, it would be exclusive rights to the Department of Transportation or the local law enforcement to do traffic calming. Tahoe Transportation District would not have that responsibility.
I think Commissioner Gardner had a point, and then back to you.
No, I was listening to this. Sorry, I want to listen to this. It just seems like you're saying that's your interpretation of it, but everybody's going to have a different interpretation. We're trying to protect the many residents that have been fighting for years not to, and what I think would be a stupid response, in the reducing the road. So, we just want to make sure we can assure that to our citizens or residents.
Okay. Madam Chair, if I may, Wendy Lang, for the record, I, I think, looking at the actual bill text, I believe it's Section 1 or 2 that addresses traffic calming measures. Tahoe Transportation District does not come into the language, is not contemplated in the bill until subsequent to that language. So, I think it's perhaps a bit more than, you know, an interpretation, is the relevance of Tahoe Transportation District is not contemplated or introduced until other topics of this proposed legislation in the, in the bill language. It is not in the same section as the traffic calming measures, if that helps for any clarification.
So, just to be redundant, traffic calming powers are not given to TTD in this bill?
Correct.
And frankly, TTD doesn't have any authority to reduce lanes now, and never has.
That's correct.
Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you. And I, and I understand where my fellow commissioners are coming from. Every time that there is a proposal of this nature, our residents think that we have put the final nail in the coffin regarding lane reductions, or lane narrowing, or the approval of bike paths along the 50 corridor, not so much in 28. We don't have a whole lot of county property that's in 28, on SR 28. But, and that's, that's what we're hearing, obviously. This blew up over the weekend, this last weekend, in our faces, and, and, Senator Robin Titus had to weigh in on it also, and I know that Assembly Member Ken Gray is now looking at it, because it's over on the assembly side. It did get passed out of, out of committee and out of that side of the state legislature, and so, but there are two, two critical deadlines that are approaching, and I was going to mention this later, but May 16th is the second, is, it has to be out of committee. It has to be out of committee on May 16th. So we do have two weeks here for clarifying language to get put into that, perhaps, if that's the desire. Based on what you've said today, I'm inclined not necessarily to take a stance one way or the other on this particular bill, not to support it, but not to oppose it either. But I think it's extremely important that our public, because I, you know, we are getting tired of being beat up over the road diet process and, and, and the emergency access that's required. I, and I, and I believe it's not, it's not a desire, it's a requirement for us to keep that corridor as an emergency route to get out of that, out of that case of a conflagration, so, or any other emergency for that matter. So, anyways, I think that's what our residents are looking for, is some closure on this idea.
Well, just because a resident says they can do a lane reduction under this language doesn't mean that is a fact. Are there other questions?
Madam Chair, I have no question, but having been on the TTD board for four years until you took my place, and I mean that in a good way, not in a bad way, I know that TTD has no, no appetite for reducing the lanes on Highway 50 during any stretch, period, fini, done. I don't know how this keeps raising its ugly head, because I think some people, is it a bad thing to call people paranoid? I don't know. But some people think that every time anything happens to Highway 50, NDOT and some nefarious group of somebodies are trying to reduce their laneage on Highway 50. That is not the case. I've never heard that to be the case. Somebody a couple of years ago, somebody who obviously doesn't live here, thought it would be a good idea to put a bunch of roundabouts on Highway 50 and make it one lane in each direction, and have this utopian bike lane on both sides of the road, and the citizens here, including me, went ballistic. And that has now been taken off the drawing board. I, I assume that it will never be put on the drawing board, because nobody wants to take these slings and arrows that would come from that. So, for all those that are listening, forget it. Highway 50 is four lanes. It will remain four lanes, period. Thank you.
And just to remind everyone, this board did take action to support that exact position. All right, good. Does any, so, before we go to public comment, let's hear, exactly, let's hear SB 69.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, again Wendy Lang for the record. So SB 69 is legislation that is supported by Story County. It would enable local governments to participate in the tax abatement process with the state of Nevada, including fire districts. Story County has asked for the support of Douglas County, and so that is one of the reasons, I believe, this is on the agenda for your consideration. And one of the key elements of that is they're seeking to defray expenses to providing services to new businesses in the community when those businesses have tax abatement and are not contributing to the coffers of the county, if I said that appropriately. And it sounds like Commissioner Gardner may have more to add on this. Thank you.
So, yes, this, as, as Ms. Lang has specified, this, each, each county is allowed three, I believe, three BDRs on an annual basis. We didn't submit any ourselves, but this is one that was submitted by Story County. Of course, they've been drastically affected by the development in TRIC, and had to upfront a lot of that infrastructure cost, and without any conversations with them and their board in advance of the tax abatements. We've had two projects that believe that it came before us, the UPS, UPS and AVK regarding, or regarding tax abatements. And once again, we really didn't, we weren't really informed of that or knowledgeable of that until it got on our board agenda, you know? So, this gives, this is just asking for the ability of boards, commissions to be able to, a seat at the table and talk about those financial things that are going to happen, and they're going to be responsible for, or perhaps going to negotiations with the companies that are seeking these tax abatements in advance of it actually coming before. that are seeking these tax abatements in advance of it actually coming before the board. So I totally support this one on, in that regard. So anytime that we can become involved in things that are going to affect our county, that's good.
Are there questions or comment on SB 69? All right, is there any public comment on either, on this agenda item, including SB 69 or SB 426? Thank you for your patience.
I'm retalked. I know. Well, God bless you for being here.
Good afternoon, for the record, I'm Beth Wallace. I'm a full-time resident of Zephyr Cove, and I've been involved in this Highway 50 issue. And trust me, we hate coming back all the time to address this. I am back asking the Board of Commissioners, County Commissioners, to officially propose, oppose the passage of SB 426, which you know was passed last week by the Senate. It was amended the day before without any committee or public input. I'm upset and concerned about that. As you know, the original intent of the bill was to address the issue of parking. Hooray, we all agree that needs to be addressed. But from the way I read the bill, and I'd love to talk to you, is that it has given the Tahoe Transportation District power to introduce traffic calming measures that include efforts to reduce vehicular speed. We would all be in favor of that. But I feel with the vague language of the bill, it opens up a can of worms. What if it did reduce lanes? What if it did reduce the width of the lanes? By the way, you know that up at Tahoe right now, we're going through a two-year restriping and resurfacing project that started last week, and they are reducing the width of each lane. That is not something the public knew, that's not something the residents knew. We asked for input and we did not get it. These calming measures also include promoting safe and pleasant conditions for motorists, bicyclists, pedestrians, et cetera. This could mean, to me, a decrease of lane width, which I don't think is particularly safe, and could accommodate a bike and walking path on the highway, which we believe is totally unsafe. And Mr. Rice, you addressed the issue of no lane reduction, but in the NDOT plan on their website, it still includes bike and pedestrian paths on some parts of Highway 50. The only way that's accommodated is to reduce lanes or reduce lane width. The language of these amendments is ambiguous and open to great interpretation. As a resident of the community, it's really frustrating to come back to all the agencies. I think we do feel manipulated. Agencies change, who's in charge, we're not sure. So please take into consideration the opposition to SB 426 in its current form. Thank you.
Wow, three minutes on the dot. Thank you for your comments and your timing. Is there any other public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, I will bring it to the board for any discussion or motion.
I don't have any other comments. I would move that this board take a stance of support of SB 69 as presented by Story County and, and as amended by them, and take a neutral stance on SB 426 at this time.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we support AB 69 and remain, SB 69 and remain neutral on SB 426. All in favor?
Wendy, can you make an amended motion now?
Yeah, yeah.
I just don't, I would like to amend the motion where we, instead of taking no stance, we request that they add language clarifying that, even if it's not important, even if they can't do it, we could at least make the request that they add language to clarify that they don't have any, what you call, traffic calming powers?
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I can, yeah, I can accept that as a friendly amendment and second, you know, second that amendment.
Sure.
Okay. Then the motion as amended is that we support SB 69 remain neutral on SB 426 with the request that they, the language be amended to say that TTD will not have traffic calming powers. You know, I, I'm sorry, I don't want to complicate this, but I do want TTD to have some traffic calming powers. I want them to be able to do no parking.
I'm open to, if you could word it better, basically, where they can't reduce the road...
How about request that, that they amend the language to indicate that TTD cannot reduce lanes?
That there would be no lane reduction on Highway 50.
No lane reductions. All right, is, are you good with that amendment?
I am.
Okay, everybody is.
Mr. Ritchie, are you, are you clear on where we are here? Okay.
Okay. And then it's been moved that we support SB 69 and that we remain neutral on SB 426, but that we request, if possible, language that would clarify there should be no lane reduction on Highway 50. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously.
That's on the amendment.
On the amendment?
Now we have to...
Okay, now we, now we do the main motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. All right, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We will go to...
You know, before we leave this item, I just, I did want to talk about those deadlines, okay? May 16th, I understand, any bill has to be out of committee by May 16th. I also understand that May 27th is the date for final passage out of the, either the Assembly or out of the Senate. And I believe that the state legislature closes session June the 2nd, is what I understand. So I just wanted to make sure we articulated those.
So we know when we can breathe easier.
Well, we'll know what our damages are a little bit better.
All right, very good, thank you for that. Moving to Agenda Item 17.3 for presentation-only announcements, reports, updates from county commission members, including updates on the various boards and/or commissions that they may be a member of or a liaison to, or any other meetings, functions they have attended, and any requests by a commissioner for discussion of a future agenda item. Commissioner Tolbert, do you have anything?
Yeah, real quick, as part of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, I would like to invite the public out Thursday, May 8th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the fairgrounds. They're going to have a visioning workshop for the extent of the master plan of the fairgrounds. So if you want to have your input heard on the potential of, of the expansion of that facility, I recommend you come there from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. You wouldn't have to stay for the whole time. Come in, drop off your, your comments, and go back home. That was it.
Thank you.
On Thursday, the 23rd, I attended a TRPA meeting. The meeting was at the north end of the lake. They have to give those folks equal time once in a while, but mostly they were talking about the, the next day, which was to be a tour of the, what we used to call, Wettles Castle. But unfortunately, I was unable to make that, that sojourn, but that, the extent of my involvement.
Commissioner Gardner?
There's a couple of community events that I wanted to call highlight, too. This weekend, starting tomorrow, is Western Heritage Day in Genoa, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. There are two concerts Friday and Saturday night. Those are sold out, so don't try to buy tickets, okay? However, there is a lot of activities and bands and things taking place all day Saturday, and, and those are all free events. So I would encourage the public to take advantage of that. And, and there is a horse parade, this will be the third annual horse parade. It's no motorized vehicles, so it's, during, down Foothill, I guess it is, is that what it's called? It was Jack's Valley Foothill type of thing, right there at the corner of, of Genoa Lane. So I would be remiss, my, my buddy, Dan, Dan...
Ainsworth.
Ainsworth, his last name escaped me real quick there. But anyways, he'd be, he'd be upset with me if I didn't mention that. So please take advantage of that this weekend, because it's a great, great, great weekend. And other than that, I don't have anything, we've been meeting so often, I don't recall what, what I've said and what I haven't said at previous meetings. I think that's it for right now, okay?
The only thing I want to mention is that there was an excellent emergency management conference Commissioner Tolbert attended on one of the four days. I was there on one of the four days, I was there the day they did the tabletop exercise, and it was very informative, and I do have a list of things that I want to do as a result of attending that. And our Douglas County was very well represented and was very on task, and I was very pleased. We can sleep easy knowing we've got people who are well-prepared and getting better prepared all the time, so I appreciate that. All right, closing public comment, is there any public comment on matters that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of Commissioners, but not on the agenda that we just had? Yes, welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Tannawut Downing, and I'm a national civil rights advocate and litigator from Washington, D.C. I need to provide a public notice, this is in accordance with USC's Rules of Civil Procedure, as well as also Rule 17 and Rule 20 of the United States Supreme Court. I need to notify you guys that it is unlawful to, to pay public officials to break the law. So Clause 1, Amendment 5, certainly part of the Constitution was adopted and ratified by the people on December 15th, 1791. In all intents and purposes, it states, "No person shall be held to answer for a capital or otherwise infamous crime unless on presentment or indictment of a grand jury." The Nevada State Constitution, Article 1, Section 8, makes a very, very similar statement, requiring the indictment by a grand jury before arresting someone, holding them over for that capital or that infamous crime. However, here in the state of Nevada, there is an inferior law that's been enacted that permits a prosecuting attorney or police officers to charge by way of information, not by indictment. That is unlawful, because information is not an indictment. And so as a result, you know, I need to advise the board here, because we are getting ready to argue a case to the United States Supreme Court that's going to address this issue. We're hoping to be able to mitigate any further, you know, litigation with the state of Nevada so we can direct the public officials here to act in lawful constitutional manner, consistent with the procedures and processes codified in the Constitution of the United States, the obligations that they have. So this is an opportunity to, to be able to provide notice to you guys. We have a couple of affidavits here that we're going to be putting on the record, as well as also giving to the, to the deputy attorney, our district attorney here. We also have affidavits that have been delivered and served to the Attorney General, General Ford, as well as also to the, to the State Supreme Court. So we need to get this addressed, because the, the charging by way of information, what it does is it actually causes, in excess of amount of power, that eliminates the neutral unbiased decision maker that would normally be in place, and that's what the, what the grand jury's purpose is. And so that's why the Constitution of the United States of America provides for this obligation, that's why the state is obligated to do it. Now, of course, an amalgamant violation is when you pay a public official to break the law, right? And so that would be unconstitutional, an amalgamant violation, as well as also the state cannot create a law that directs their agents to break the law. That would be a law that, that impairs the obligation contracts, that would be violation of Article 1, Section 10 of the United States Constitution. So I'm here today to be able to provide this notice, let you guys know that if you continue to pay the public officials and not direct them to act in lawful constitutional manner, consistent with the obligations, procedures, and process codified in the Constitution of the United States, that, that there can be criminal sanctions that would be brought against other individuals. Because when it comes to the, the, the crime of conspiracy with regard to public officials, it says, "Any person who, having knowledge of any of the wrongs, conspired to be done, and who have the power to prevent or aid in the prevention of the commission's saying, neglects or refuses to do so, may be doing, as events the action." So having been provided notice of disinformation, I would ask you guys, please go out, take a look at Clause 1, Amendment 5, and direct your, the agents to act in lawful constitutional manner. Thank you guys so much, God bless.
Thank you. I may have to watch the recording at half-speed to understand...
...because from Washington, D.C., I just know a lot of time politicians, and unfortunately, they're very limited, 30 minutes, the time goes, as much information...
Yes.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Yes. Is there any other public comment?
Jason Gibson, post-political prisoner, arrested here in Douglas County while at a peaceful assembly for alleged assault and battery by members of the JALEC institution, their stakeholders and employees, who have essentially conspired to run the House of Gibson out of town, to force the conversion of our family estate through their administrator, Stephen Walsh, and their employee, Justin Clauser, of the Indigent Defense Services These documents here will be on the record for review by the general public. It wasn't just the one arrest that resulted in a 42-day lockdown, 23/7, subject to taking pharmaceutical pills in order to be released. No victim, no crime, no magistrate's order, no genuine victim statement, no crime whatsoever. They did that to take me off the ballot, but there was still 7,300 of you that were awake enough to vote for me, so I want to thank you for that. And I also want to draw your attention to the second false arrest, which was engineered by domestic violence advocate Melissa Elges, the wife of undersheriff Ron Elges, who claimed that I would hunt her down and threatened her here in the public assembly in front of a full house, in front of the most powerful man in the county who's armed to the teeth, who's Ron Elges. You'd have to be insane. So obviously, we have an integrity issue when it comes to our public servants and our employees that starts at the very highest level of their JALEC criminal enterprise institution, which they have elected...
Mr. Gibson, the county commission does not have anything to do with arrests, that's the sheriff's department, so please tailor your...
You pay, you pay them, they're your employees, you determine their salaries, and you direct the financial best interests of that institution. These documents are on the record. Now I'm going to shift gears here to remind you that most recently, there was an intent to further enslave the entire population of the world by means of fictitious persons who have mischaracterized us, misrepresented us, and have failed to uphold their oath and their pledge.
We don't have control over the population of the world, so limit your comments, limit your comments to what we have control over.
You have control over your oath and your pledge.
I, I don't hear anything that, you're welcome to finish your time, well, you only have 16 seconds, but you've got to talk about stuff we have control over.
You are the ones with the purse strings. You are the ones directing the budget allocations, you are the ones who direct the policies of the employees who work for Douglas County constituents, period. You can try to circumnavigate and sidestep the jurisdiction of your oath and your pledge all that you want, but it's only a matter of time before we find you in contempt.
All right, sir, your time is up. Thank you.